I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome our viewers on cable. We're starting a little early this evening because we will be going into executive session. And as the committee members know from your package, there is a motion for executive session to discuss personnel matters, and I would like somebody to pass that, uh, put that motion on the table. Ms. Hunt.
I want that we go into executive session for personnel matters.
We have a motion to go into executive session, seconded by Ms. Badger. Are there any questions to the, to the executive session? Okay, I will take a roll call vote on your vote to go in.
Yes.
Ms. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
The school committee will be going to executive session to discuss a personnel matter. At the end of executive session, we'll come back out here and finish our regular business meeting. Thank you. We started our meeting at 6:30. We had an executive session, and now we're ready to be, continue again in open session. And so we're now up to our budget hearing. And before we open up for a public hearing on the budget, Ms. Badger had brought up a point previous meeting about reporting on revenue, and I think it was a really good, good suggestion, and so we're gonna have that report here this evening. Dr. May, ask this.
Yes, during our last school committee meeting, our budget presentation, Ms. Badger asked if we had information relative to grants that we generate and, you know, apply for and receive here in Plymouth Public Schools. We apply for quite a few grants. We're not always successful, but the information that we're gonna share tonight definitely will allow the school committee to actually see the kind of grants that we do receive. So keep in mind that the grants that we apply for in, in public education are really grants that are supplemental, in the sense that they actually supplement what we do in our school system, in a sense that they are requirements for additional services. They, they cannot supplant a grant, what is supplant, which is a violation of the majority of the grants that we have, is if we took money and use that money to pay for some things that we do now. What we, what we have to do with these grants is we actually take the money from the grants and we actually enhance the services that we do have. So the Title Grants are a prime example of that. Special education grants that we receive are examples of that. So I think for the general public's knowledge that there are very strict guidelines to the grants that we do receive. So with that said, I, if we could get on, up on the presentation board tonight, be the first handout that you see on your electronic school board presentation, and you will see that there are a number of grants that we are bringing to the district. I'll start at the top. We have our Coordinator Family and Community Grant. You can see the trending over time with that grant. Right now, we're, we're about $174,000 on that. Enhance School Health, which is, which are, that's a grant that supports our school health services in our districts, $120,000. Inclusive Preschool Learning Grant, and I think we did talk about our, during our last budget present, our budget presentation, we did talk that there are grants that are actually being reduced. You take a look at the trending, you'll see where that, these dollars are actually going. So back in 2016, we received $92,000. That grant is down to $30,000, so that's a reduction of $60,000, $62,000. Parent Power Grant, we used to get $9,000, we get, we don't have anything planned for that. Capital Skills Grant, $57,750. We got it back in 2017. That was $52,000. So you can see just in state grants, these are state grants that we get here in, in Plymouth. We are anticipating about $324,000 for FY '20. So we actually, you can see that trending and, and where we are with that. So that's what we get for state grants. We can move over to, to federal grants. Talk about Circuit Breaker. Circuit Breaker is, just like the term identifies, if there's an emergency, special education payments that we have, there are services that are above and beyond, we can actually enact Circuit Breaker reimbursement for some of these costs, not all, some. So you can see back in 2016, we got $1.8 million in Circuit Breaker. We're about, we're about $2.6 million, we're estimating about $2.8 million. So that's what we get and we apply. Keep in mind, Circuit Breaker is very complex in the sense that we have to continually submit paperwork to identify if those reimbursables are actually reimbursable. So that's something that our Special Education Department does. They do a, a very good job of tracking all those expenses. So you can see just in Circuit Breaker, that's $2.8 million. In the budget presentation that we demonstrated last school committee meeting, we did highlight what was Circuit Breaker and what the total budget was for special education, what was Circuit Breaker reimbursable, and, and what we received and what we did not. So that's that portion. Dissemination Grant, we got, we, we got $48,000 from that. Drug-Free Communities Grant, keep in mind, this is a grant that we received from the Plymouth Public Schools to support Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative. Keep in mind, we did that. We were running this organization without support. Dr. Campbell actually was very involved with writing that grant, and a number of partners that we have are part of that. Kelly Matcomber has been in front of this committee, presented to you in a number of times regarding what we do with that, but that's that grant. Our Early Childhood Grant is, you know, we can see it's gone, it's $46,000 back in 2016, it's gone up to $48,000. Perkins Vocational, this is one of those grants that is strictly for vocational education. There are a layer, layers of guidelines and regulations that we have to follow to ensure that we spend these dollars appropriately, and these are strictly for vocational education. Special Education IDEA Allocation, this is based on enrollment, based on our special education qualified students. We, this is a federal grant that we get to help with those costs. Keep in mind that these are above and beyond what we do, you know, support our students today. We're going down to SPED Program Improvement, that was back in 2016, '17. We got about $60,000. That grant is no longer available. Title II-A, this is the grant that we talked about last meeting where we were, $247,000. If we just carried that out to 2020, we're about $165,000. Keep in mind, this is a grant that's very specific to ensuring that we have highly qualified workforce around certification of teachers. We do a great deal of professional development here in the Plymouth Public Schools. Dr. Campbell's office runs professional development for all our staff that need to be recertified, and we have an obligation, ask the district to offer that. This grant has been designated to help support that, but as you can see, that reduction of support is going to, we're gonna have to figure out how we adjust to that because, you know, we, we, we need to figure that out. We do have an obligation and we'll, we'll work on that. Title IV-A, you can see that is one that we are, are working with. We are at $72,791, and we have about $64,000 approved moving forward. We have Title I. This is one that I talked about last, last meeting. Back when I was in charge of this area, we used to bring about $1.3 million in, on Title I. Title I is for early literacy and, and math. It's really primarily early literacy. So we are, this is one that we're gonna have to figure out because this is a grant that helps literacy across the district. We have schools that qualify for it, not everyone does, but you can see, if we do the totals for, for this, you know, we're about $5.8 million in support from grants to help us do what we do in our, our schools. Now we'll talk about revolving. Revolving accounts, it's the last section on this worksheet, is relative to the amount of money that we bring in, and that's user fees for athletics, school lunch programs, where we actually bring that in. Keep in mind, school lunch is actually a self-supporting program. They pay everything from, from food that we purchase, sell, to the insurance benefits for the employees in that department. We have a revolving account that is about $400,000. So that's, that is just to pay the cost. We are just on the edge of doing that, of meeting, meeting the needs in that program. And we have discussed at the school committee table in years past about how we can keep this program operational and without having to increase lunch prices, because costs of food go up, benefits go up, contracts go up, and we've, the, our food service program has, has ventured out into catering. They do a number of different things to make ends meet, and they have done that over the last six or seven, maybe eight years. They have increased their offering to be able to generate more funding to be able to offset the costs of this program. So if you take a look at that, that revolving account has about $2.8 million in it. Technical Studies, Technical Studies Program, this is a revolving account that helps to help with the operations of the vocational program. We have crews that go out, we, they, they do work, they get paid, that all goes back in. We do lunches, we do automotive repair, things of that nature. That revolving account actually helps to manage those programs, and those, all these programs, from athletics to school lunch to technical studies, that is the limit of what we can collect, and these programs run right on the edge of a, of a zero balance and making ends meet. So just because we have a $400,000 approved limit doesn't mean that we have $400,000 in the bank. That's how much that revolving, revolving account can actually contain. So if you take a look at what we bring in, in state and federal grants, I think you can see what that is. Athletic, our students have user fees, and those user fees really help to offset the costs of the athletic programs in the district. So, you know, from uniforms to referees to different needs of the program, that helps to be able to accommodate those needs of the district. And same thing with school lunch. School lunch is somewhat of a success story. When you take a look at, we're one of the only schools, school programs in the Commonwealth that actually is a self-supporting program that runs in the black. A lot of school districts have actually had to take school lunch over and actually bring some of those services into the budget because they can't make ends meet. I think I give credit to Mr. Costin and Mr. Van Cott for their willingness to look at other agencies of revenue, which they have over the last, like I mentioned, eight years. So Ms. Badger, this is what we bring in for state and federal grants, and also the revolving accounts and the money that's brought in through those programs. I do have another worksheet that we did put together that, that demonstrates historical other district revenue streams, so if we could put that up. This worksheet demonstrates other dollars that have come into the school district. As you all know, and we monitor this quite heavily, the school committee has the, the opportunity of every school, every school committee meeting of looking at fundraisers that we do in this school district. So with all the fundraisers that we are bringing in the district, this is net, not, not, not looking at the gross dollars that are brought into these programs. For 2019, the fundraisers across the district to offset costs in our schools is about $353,000. So that's brought in by parent teacher organizations, PTAs, homeschool, homeschool associations, band boosters, athletic boosters, all those different organizations that actually plan and do fundraisers. These are the amounts that they actually bring in. You can see year-to-date for, for 2020, we're hovering around $105,000, about a third of the way through the school year. So that's on, on track. We go down to Medicaid, and this is a presentation, the dollars that you see tonight, you wanna keep an eye on these, because tonight you're gonna have a presentation from Dr. Rogers and also Mr. Costin relative to Medicaid revenue. Keep in mind, we have a number of students in the Plymouth Public Schools that have Medicaid support. We do Medicaid billing opportunities within our school department, whether it's counseling or with nurse services. Our school department does the effort and the work to actually log all those hours, and then we submit through UMass Amherst. They have a division that actually does the work for us. They submit the paperwork, the town of Plymouth gets a check for Medicaid reimbursement. So that's a cost revenue to the town of Plymouth. The Plymouth School Department requests a small amount of, of those dollars to actually pay for some of the data collection that we use in the Plymouth Public Schools, and that, that number is documented, and we've actually presented in front of town meeting for that in years past. So you can actually see the, the revenue and the trend. The, the thing that we're gonna discover tonight is this might, this might change dramatically because of the rules and regulations of Medicaid and how we collect. Dr. Rogers and, and Mr. Costin will actually identify that as we go forward. So let's take a look at revolving revenue, cable. I think over time, you'll recognize back in, in 2010, we received $301,000 in cable revolving, and we're up to about $492,000. And that number has fluctuated over time. That really depends on the subscribership of cable subscribers in the town of Plymouth. There's a cable tax that's charged, the PAC TV receives a percentage, we receive a, a small percentage of that, and that is, actually runs all our cable programming, TV programming, from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So any video program that you see in the Plymouth Public Schools, including when we opened up north and we opened up south, those studios were absolutely empty. There were, there were no furniture, no cameras, no tripods, no anything. The cable revolving account actually was used to buy that equipment for that program, so the students in the Plymouth Public Schools could have the opportunity to have these program opportunities that you see today. So you'll see that trending in that, and as we did here during last school, last school year, there are some concerns with that fund going away because of federal rule changes. And we did have a parent speak to that, looking to see if there's a possibility of adding stability to that account to ensure that those programs could continue if that grant funding did go away or that revenue went away. So that's something to, to, to be aware of. The last thing that I'll highlight is what we've done with solar, and I, we, we get asked this question all the time, relative to, you know, how do we calculate that we're actually saving money? So if you take a look at 2014, these are dollars that we have saved in reference to our solar fields and farms that we have in, in surrounding communities to Plymouth. These are the dollars that, that has demonstrated savings compared to what our solar, our electric bills were before we started and what the bills are today. Keep in mind that, that as time has gone on, we've actually increased our solar contribution as far as what we generate, and you can see for FY '19, we've cost avoided $760,000, and year-to-date, we're at $952,000. So I think you'll see that if we would've not engaged in this solar project model back in 2014, actually, we started back probably about 2012, 2011, it took a while to get this off the ground, we would, we would've incurred some significant expense that we would, we would be discussing today as far as how we, we could actually make ends meet in a different way, because we would've not avoided these costs. The last item that I'd like to demonstrate to you is dollars that we have received from the Mass youth school building authority. The Mass youth school building authority, for those of you that are not aware, is probably the most aggressive grant program in the country for school buildings. We have applied through Mr. Costin and Mr. Montron. This is, this is a demonstration from '09 to 2019, which is over a 10-year period of time. We did projects at South Elementary and South Middle School, and those projects, we got a grant reimbursement of $18 million in those projects. So whatever was approved at town meeting, we have to approve the total cost, but what happens is the MSBA will reimburse those costs at an agreed-upon documentation that we, we sign off on. Keep in mind, for South Elementary and South Middle, we received about 18.1 million. Moving on to Plymouth North High School and Plymouth South High School. Take a look at what we've, Plymouth North High School was about an $84 million project. We received $37 million, $37.7 million. Plymouth South High School was a $110 million project. We received $45.7 million. And I would, I might add that the MSBA has changed their reimbursement model. Back when we built South Middle, which we are gonna pay off this year, South Middle School, when we went out and started that project, we bonded it and we had to pay interest at a total value of the project until it was complete. So that means that the MSBA would have to pay interest on their portion for the duration of that borrowing. If it was a 20-year note, they would pay the interest on that 20 years. What the MSBA has done with the reauthorization of their establishment, they decided that it was wise to actually pay their debt down immediately after the completion of the project so that the MSBA would not have to incur, nor the school district, because now that brings everything, that, that whole project down in, in scope. They have actually paid the town of Plymouth $37,773,000 for North, and they have also paid Plymouth South High School $45,726,000 for their contribution. That, that has already been paid, so the town of Plymouth is, is paying the difference. So I, we do get cited, there's, you know, for, ever since we built the schools, people have said that town of Plymouth is, is spending over $200 million on our schools. The value of the projects have been over $200 million with the senior center. Keep in mind that we have received reimbursement from the MSBA. You see, I have the numbers here tonight, so those are valid numbers, and that's, that's exactly what the MSBA has agreed to. Keep in mind that these grants are not, you can't just call up the MSBA and say, "We want a building." They are very long, very arduous. You have to put a scope down of what you'd like to see, and I do give credit to, you know, three sets of administrators at Plymouth North High School for making that happen. And I give Ms. Frye and her team at South High School back then the credit for putting an educational specification together that met the guidelines of the MSBA in order to qualify for the grant. So again, these are grants, and these two documents tonight demonstrate the work of a lot of people, from the community of Plymouth to actually voting this project, these two, these two projects, and actually parents for standing and supporting these, and also administration, teachers for helping to get this work done. And Dr. Sorensen, these are the documents. I believe Ms. Badger was, was intrigued by what we brought in, and I hope this satisfies what your curiosity was from last meeting.
You have the floor.
No, thank you so much for putting that together. I mean, I think that it's a really useful document for not just us at the committee, but to see, kind of, I mean, our budget would be, what, $4 million more if you were looking at this? And we're already kind of surprised at what our, what our budget is right now, and we're getting pushback for what it is, but if we needed to come up with that $4 million, how would we? And that statement that you made, you know, we have to figure it out, we have to figure out what we, what we do when these grants go away, and that is, I mean, like you said, with Title I, that's a potential, we, we may not offer that, or we may not offer it right through our budget right now, but those are really important programs that we then would need to figure out how to follow through, because if we don't, we have students who are not getting the need and the help that they need. So I think this is really, really wonderful information, so thank you for putting together. And I think, I don't know if it's your plan, but it might be a good addition into the budget book in general that goes out to town meeting members, just for them to be able to see it as well.
Good thought. Yeah, there are two of the points I'd like to make relative to the changing dynamic of education, because, you know, and I really appreciate, I mean, over the years, we've had a lot of questions, and, and I think when we do meet with the Subcommittee for Education of Finance and, and anyone, town meeting members and so on, I think it's important to realize that, you know, this is 20 years for me in Plymouth. I have seen, I have seen a dynamic shift in what we do in SS School District. And to, you know, we have dropped in enrollment. There's just absolutely no question about that. It's a condition of many schools up Route 3, all the way down to Cape, all the way to Providence, up 195. The enrollment in schools in this part of the Commonwealth are dropping. It's dropping dramatically, Western Mass, same thing. One of the problems that we have, and, and, you know, I think you hear it from our principals, program directors quite often, is the needs of our children, the dynamic shift of socially-emotional issues that happen in our schools, and on top of that, we have a number of mandates that we just cannot make sense of. We try, we work hard. I will tell you that there should be, in my mind, in most people's mind, when you have a drop of enrollment, that you should see some level of reduction of dollars because you're losing kids. Unfortunately, we have not seen that. You know, I prepared this budget for our community knowing that it's my last. I will tell you, and I will, I will tell this community that I don't know what we're gonna have to do, what the school committee's gonna have to do, and what this administration's gonna have to do to try to make ends meet in the future, because I don't see an end in sight as far as what's expected and required of school systems. So, you know, I'm very grateful that we have some very creative people around the table that are gonna, they're gonna have to continue to think of ways that we can make this more palatable to the community, because we hear it, I hear it. And we will, you know, I think we've presented a responsible budget. In some people's eyes, it's not reasonable, okay? It's hard, it's a hard pill to swallow when you know that our budgets are going up, and they keep going up. As I presented last meeting, this budget represents, the increases are in contracted services. I'm not gonna pick on programs, I'm not gonna highlight where they are. People have the information, they can ask questions, I'll address it. If I highlight it, I don't wanna pit program against program. But I will tell you that, man, it's, it's just getting more and more expensive. When you, when you have programs that can raise what they charge by ridiculous rates, and we have no, we have no recourse, it's a problem. So I think legislatively, I think policy, there's some movement last year with Chapter 70. Plymouth is in the same pot with all these other school districts. That's why there was so much momentum last year to get some Chapter 70 changes made. But I'm sorry for taking up your time with my rant, but it is something that I felt that it was necessary for you to, to hear, because it is gonna be a continual challenge. Thank you.
All right, I thank you for the information. I just wanna say that when we present this budget on town meeting floor in the spring, we must be prepared, and I have to speak to town meeting, I'll be prepared, to address this very issue, because I know it's going to come up. Why is the budget... Why is the budget going up while the population's going down? And there are reasons for that, and I want to be able to educate town meeting as clearly as I can as to why that's happening. Hopefully silence that misnomer.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from school committee members? Okay, thank you for that. At this time, I would like to declare the public hearing on the fiscal twenty-one budget open. Is there anybody who would like to address the committee regarding the fiscal twenty-one school budget? Please come up, have a seat, and identify yourselves.
Are these mics on? Oh, go on. Thank you. Pat McCarthy, Precinct Five, Town Meeting Member, Vice Chair, longstanding member of the community, longstanding Town Meeting Member, probably on and off for twenty-five years, a senior citizen, and the parent of two Plymouth-educated sons. And I've worked on advocacy for school issues for probably forty years, on and off. And I must say, without consultation, that Michelle, Gary, and Jim, you mentioned some of the same things that I have in my summary remarks from having observed your meetings, and it's great because you're on TV, so we don't all have to come out at night like this, but I was at your last joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and that really motivated me to come and speak before you, because these are some of my concerns, and it's going to be repetition, but I hope you don't mind. So these are my concerns about the misinformation about the school budget and needs. At the recent joint meeting, a Fincom member mentioned about only funding so much for special needs in your budget and cutting it off at that point. This shows a lack of understanding of the law. Town meeting members may have the same misperception. Second, a Select Board member spoke, as in the past, about the two-hundred million dollars being spent on two schools, and that we have less population of students. This demonstrated to me the lack of understanding of how SBA reimbursed, and I had about eighty-four million, so I'm correcting that to eighty-three million, about eighty-three million dollars to back to the town of Plymouth. The state and federal unfunded and underfunded mandates have increased drastically, even though we have less kids in the population. This needs to be clarified again, and I'm going to say, over and over and over, anywhere you go. Thirdly, the lack of transportation costs being reimbursed. And I know we were trying to work on this issue, since we're not a regional district, however, it is what it is. Fourth, each child, and this is special to me, because I have four grandchildren in Delaware that have IEPs for varying reasons, but each child, whether in special needs or AP programs, must have a quality program in every school. The same curriculum is available to all students. And fifth, fixed student, the fixed costs have to be funded, we have no choice. As Michelle mentioned at a recent meeting, it is important to give the info to all about the work projects and money that is raised by the tireless efforts of parents and concerned citizens for school programs. Also, the Parents' Parent Groups for Sports and Visual Performing Arts contribute to the success of those programs. All of these efforts contribute to the success and well-being of our students. There are so many challenges facing these kids with all of the social and emotional issues in our society. We, and I'm going to say, as citizens and taxpayers in Plymouth, all of us, must care for them. Please be available, and this is to all of you, for all the upcoming meetings, in person, and our caucus meetings, to answer any concerns before getting to town meeting, and before we get our booklets necessarily. I know precinct chairs will be having a meeting, you know, going over everything, et cetera, and I hope that Gary is invited, as I did in the past, urged when I was precinct chair. And I thank you for your time and all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Thank you for coming for the committee. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the committee during this public hearing on our budget? I'm not seeing any hands, so at this moment, I will declare the closing of the public hearing. And at this point, the school committee will have an opportunity to take an action on the budget, discuss the budget. Dr. Maestis, any opening comments here?
At this time, Dr. Sorensen, the budget total and light item descriptors that were presented during the last meeting hold firm. No changes have been made in years past. If we had a change, we had an amendment, we would bring it to the table, that would be discussed, and the school committee have an opportunity to make that decision if that was warranted or not. Tonight, what we're presenting are dollar amounts that are relative to our last meeting. So the budget for discussion tonight is relative to previous meeting.
And if I read, if I remember correctly or read correctly, the bottom line of all core census was a hundred and, actually, it was a hundred and four million before health care. Health care brought it to a hundred and twenty-nine millions?
Yes.
Floor's open. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the budget for a hundred and four million, eighty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars for FYI twenty-one.
We have a motion to approve the budget at a hundred and four million. A hundred and four million, right? The printing is so small on the machine.
Well, if you go into, go into the, go into the actual meeting.
Actual meeting. All right, all right, all right. Thank you very much. I need all the help I can get.
All the way to the bar.
Oh, there it is. Oh, that's big print, I like that. All right. So the motion's for a hundred and four million, eighty-two thou, a hundred and four million, eighty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Just a second.
Seconded by Ms. Hunt. Any questions to that? Okay, there are no questions, we will vote on it.
I'm just trying to, okay.
Everybody in attendance has voted in favor. Thank you. That concludes that agenda item.
It does. Dr. Sorensen, may I just add one?
Dr. Maestis.
Yes. As traditional scope of work between now and town meeting, we will have a meeting with the Finance Committee Subcommittee, and that meeting will take place at an advertised date. We have not worked with Mr. Helm on that date, so we will have that. And as years pass, if there's a request by a town meeting precinct for us to come and add information, we will do that. We welcome that opportunity. I'd rather have that dialogue ahead of time. So if any town meeting member, precinct chairs would like me or Mr. Costin or one of our team to be there, we will definitely do that to support the presentation that we made last week and any developments thereafter.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the committee who isn't already on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So at this moment, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I would like to bring us back into session, and our next agenda item is to hear our student representatives, and we'll start with North.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school committee, esteemed members of the community. For those of you who don't know, I am Jack Freeman, a senior over at North, and I am the student representative, and I'm going to give you a report tonight. Important guidance help for seniors. As early action deadlines have come and gone, regular decision deadlines are growing closer. The counseling office will be holding four college workshops to help. The workshops will focus on the following: getting a refresher on the application process, helping students get started on the Common Application, completing necessary steps via the Common App, Naviance and College Board in order to complete the application process, organizing application and financial aid deadlines and forms required, submitting SAT scores, and completing community college applications. If you have not started yet, or if you have started but would like a counselor to check what you have done so far in order to determine if you are on track or missing any steps, please join us on the following dates: third floor computer lab, room three hundred and thirty-three, Tuesday, January seventh, two to three P.M. These are all two to three P.M. Thursday, January ninth, Tuesday, January fourteenth, or Thursday, January sixteenth. Also, seniors, please check Naviance for up-to-date deadlines and scholarship information. The Plymouth High School's local scholarship application is now available for all seniors to apply. The scholarship can be accessed through Naviance and is due January thirty-first. Also, the Massachusetts Elk Scholarship are available online. These applications are due January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Plymouth North High School winter concert events. Our band and chorus students gave amazing performances this week in back-to-back shows that were incredible. First, our band, a couple of students from Plymouth South High School, performed as marching band, concert band, and jazz groups. They were outstanding. They also performed some of the songs they played during the recent trip to the United Kingdom. The next night, our chorus students performed and did an outstanding job singing both songs that were full of thoughtful emotion and other tunes that had the crowd cheering and clapping along. Thank you to Ms. Holmes and Mr. Grossman on two spectacular nights of VPA performances. DECA districts. Ms. Schramm, Ms. Figlioli, and Ms. Goulet prepared our students for months, and this past week brought a hundred and thirty-five students to the DECA Regional Competition at Seacrest Hotel in Falmouth. In the award ceremony on Friday, our students cleaned up, making the stage in dozens of different categories, and taking home medals, trophies, and awards in an impressive number of competitions. As a senior, I know it was a lot of my friends' last DECA. They're very sad, but they said they had a good time. It was another successful year for the Plymouth North High School Marketing Program, with eighty-seven medallions received and twelve first-place finishers. I don't know how many people were there, but that sounds like a lot to me. Sports. Earlier this week, our indoor track teams started the season with five students already qualifying for states, and Sam Guston already broke the school record in the high jump, jumping five foot two. On Thursday night, the boys' hockey team beat South five and oh with Jason Norwood. Personally, I know Jason, he's a great kid. He scored four goals, and in the championship at the gala the other night, they won ten to one. Jason Norwood, no surprise there, had another hat trick, matching his goal total for last season with seven, so we're off to a great start in hockey. The boys' and girls' basketball teams also got wins to start the season, and they started off strong. Girls winning on the last-second free throw, and Saturday night started off the girls' hockey season. Esports. In their inaugural fall season, our brand-new esports team has had some unbelievable success. In two consecutive weeks, our Eagles went five and one against their competition, as they went up against schools from all over the northeastern U.S. Austin Sheets made it through the finals and will play Wednesday, the seventh, in the national championship. Championship, sorry. Personally, I don't know Austin, but saw his picture today in school. Think he was the eagle of the day, which, I don't know if you guys know that we do that, we pick an outstanding member of our student body, faculty, community, and they are eagle of the day, and I think he was the eagle of the day. I hear he is remarkable at video games, and he will mock up the competition, at this competition. Progress reports. Parents are encouraged to view their students' Aspen account to monitor their progress. A letter was sent to those students in danger of failing any subject on Friday, December fourteenth. My parents did not receive one of those letters. Thankfully. The Giving Tree. Many groups within our school community are working together to raise money for the Giving Tree. The combined money raised for the Giving Tree will go toward the gift cards that are given directly to families in the PNHS community. The efforts of the students in these clubs are very much appreciated. Smile Programs. Mobile Dentist. The dentist is coming to school, and school dental care at no cost to you will be at PNHS on Wednesday, February twelfth. If you're interested, fill out the permission form by December thirtieth. Almost done. Mini Lessons. Principal Parsons asked teachers to submit lessons for the mini lesson assignment, and they were diverse, from how to cook the perfect steak to Bosnian language and culture. There were all sorts of great ideas. Some of the amazing ideas the teachers put out there to teach were sign language, German, laundry basics, mindfulness, stress management techniques, soccer tennis, and the science of tie dye. Also, how to make cinnamon winter, sorry, how to make cinnamon winter ornaments, how to run for a political office, I could have used that my freshman year, although I did fine, how to fix a bike tire, crafting, hand lettering, tie management, and how to tie a tie. In November, students had their pick of over fifty different mini lessons. They put their first, second, and third, fourth choice into a survey, and the students were assigned to class based on availability and interest. The past Wednesday, during advisory, all students, grades nine through eleven, attended either their chosen mini lesson or a lesson on social and emotional wellness. All those that participated enjoyed the class, and we will repeat this in the spring. Holiday recess. Thank God. Holiday recess will begin Friday, December twentieth, close of school through January fifth. Thank you, I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Jack. And now, Self.
Hello. I don't know what that was either. Special thanks to all our staff who raised over eight hundred and fifty dollars last week during our annual community holiday fundraiser. PSHS will be providing holiday gift cards for families in need. Please join us for our winter chorus concert combined with Plymouth South Middle School this Wednesday, seven P.M. in the Performing Arts Center. The night promises to be a special celebration of our choruses and a cappella group. Students and parents are reminded to check their Naviance accounts for scholarships as well as college admissions visits. Throughout thus far, over thirty colleges, universities, and technical institutes have visited PSHS with sessions during K Block. Our school council met last Wednesday. We took in-depth, an in-depth look at our twenty-eighteen DESE school report and areas of strength in those that we need to approve in. Okay. Overall, the report was very positive, as PSHS continues to meet or exceed targets set forth by the state in many areas. A very special thank you to Dr. Maestis and Mrs. Haywood for supporting our student initiative Project Rising Again this school year. This event allows students to meet with the community members and positions of leadership to have a roundtable discussion that inspire and educate our youth. This event is scheduled for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. We are excited to announce that we will be welcoming approximately ten to twelve students from China to audit courses again this new year. They arrive in January tenth, and again will prove to be a very enriching experience for our students. Congratulations to our music program for a wonderful concert in a combined effort with PNHS at the Winter Instrumental Concert last week. It was an amazing night of strings, concert band, and symphony orchestra. Thank you to Mrs. Holmes and Mrs. Groob for all their efforts. The High School Academic Showcase and Text Expo will be coming up on January thirteenth for grade eight parents. Both high schools will have parent presentations regarding the grade-nine programs of students, along with the opportunities to visit with each CCTE program. Information was sent home this past week about the schools and the CCTE programs. Congratulations to our Boston Globe Fall All Scholastic Athletes. For cross-country, we had Strickland Davis; for golf, we had Nolan Skaggs; for football, we had both James Kernan and Nick Siegelmann. Finally, we want to take a minute to thank everyone for their support since the beginning of the football season. The players were amazed to see secretaries, teachers, counselors, nurses, administrators, custodians, and people from all parts of Plymouth at the game at Gillette. So many people have been a huge part in making memories for student athletes and coaches that will last a lifetime. The support the kids felt from PSHS and the community was unmatched. To quote the MIAA, "We know self-travels impacts the game. While the outcome wasn't what we hoped, we are so proud of this team, both on and off the field. They fought hard until the end, and they were very competitive until the final minutes, and that's all any coach can ask for. They have defined the word "team" since the beginning of the season. Thank you again, and I look forward to seeing everyone at all the winter sports that begin this week. Go Self, and happy holidays."
Thank you, Abigail, that was fantastic. Thank you. So we have our school improvement plan this evening, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have the school improvement plan from Hedge Elementary School, and we have Principal Wilson with members from our school council, and they're here to present. So I would like to invite Principal Wilson and members of our council here, so we have two mics up there, and, yeah, make yourself at home. We can get more, we can just pull more chairs up. Kristen, do we need to get some more chairs for you? Okay, we will, you, it's, hey, it's your time, you sit where you want. I saw that, I like that. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Wilson, I'm the principal of Hedge Elementary School, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight to review our school improvement plan from the last half of years and introduce our new school improvement plan. With me, oops, that's okay. With me this evening are members of our school council, Mrs. Nicole Manfred, who teaches fourth grade and is also our Universal Design and is also a universally designed learning coach for the school. To my right is Mrs. Lisa Brissette. She has a first grader and a fourth grader this year at our school. And Mrs. Greenwood is currently our moderate-special needs teacher servicing students in grades K one and two. Behind us is Mr. Jimmy Ma, who's had four of his own children go through Hedge Elementary School as well as a granddaughter, and is our faithful community member and volunteer that continues to service, provide services for us at Hedge School. I always like to start my presentation with a little information about Hedge. We all know we're a small school in Northbrook. We, at the time that I wrote the school improvement plan a while ago, we had one hundred and seventy-eight students enrolled in our school that represented eleven classrooms in grades K through five. Right now, we currently have two sections of every grade except for third grade where we have one. We have, based on our June information from the Department of Education, forty-three percent of our current students are identified as economically disadvantaged. We are a school-wide Title I school, so all of our students are able to access programs and staff provided by the Title-I grant. We did see an increase in our English second language population, almost ten percent, and that represents thirty-five percent of our students that English is their second language, which is about, sorry, about fifty-two families. Twenty-four percent of those students qualify for English language services. At the time that we wrote the school improvement plan, sixteen percent of our students were receiving special education services based on their individual education plans. So I'd like to go into our, our former school improvement plan, and I'll begin with our first goal. So I'll do the executive summary, and then the rest of our school council will be doing the rest. Our first goal was to increase academic achievement for all students. Based on the Department of Education, we're making moderate progress based on their goals. We did see a decline last year, which I'll be addressing in a little bit. Our big initiative is our universally-designed instruction initiative. So this is our third year working with the Department of Education's Inclusive Practice Academy. We have six members that meet regularly with a team of about twenty school districts across the Commonwealth. We have the privilege of working with world-renowned UDL experts, Katie Novak and Kristen Rodriguez. And we also have a technology assistant mentor who comes and works with us directly at the school. So we're, in January, Lori Casno, who's our mentor, will be working, coming to our school, and she'll be doing an implementation survey with me to get an assessment of how our UDL implementation plan is going for our school. So thinking of UDL, it's, we're trying to provide access for all learners. Hedge is a very diverse community, so it's really important for us to make sure that we're providing access for all of our learners, including our general education students, our special education students, our English language students, or students with social-emotional needs. And we do that by providing multiple means of engagement, action, expression, and representation. So thinking of UDL, and thinking of our presentation today, we've tried to provide a variety of different representations in our slide. You also have our action plan in written form if you are a learner that prefers writing, or you could listen to us talk if that's a preferred way for you to intake information. So we're trying to UDL everything that we do, including our staff meetings. When you look at our accountability data in our percentile rankings, we were really excited last year when we came and presented to all of you on how we had made significant gains. And we did see a decline last year. We aren't exactly where we were back in two thousand and seventeen, but we know that we need to continue the work that we're doing. And so in our school improvement plan that we're presenting to you tonight, we've really spent a lot of time thinking of the different things we need to do to get to where we want to go. Our second goal is to establish leadership opportunities for staff through a professional learning community model. One of our big implementation goals was to create a leadership team for our school, and we worked with the Department of Education on creating a model. Currently, we have representatives from most of our grade levels, our literacy teacher, our moderate-special needs teacher. We meet bi-weekly. We go over the goals of the school improvement plan. We talk about where we're at. We come, and we actually develop, professional development that we share at our staff meetings. And so the leadership team is part of designing some of the UDL work that we're doing across the school. We also implemented morning grade-level collaborative planning meetings where our teachers meet. This current year, they have been meeting on a rotation of a seven-day rotation where our special ed teacher, our E.L. teacher, our literacy teacher, and our grade-level teachers meet to talk about content standards, learning assessments. They develop response to intervention plans, and they monitor student progress. And so that's a big piece of what we do on a regular basis. We will be speaking more to how that's going to change over the course of the next few years. We also have been utilizing the academy to train teachers to be trainers. So Nicole Manfred has taken the UDL one-on-one course that we're going to hopefully roll out into the district next year. And she'll speak more to that later on. Our third goal, we can get there. There we go. Was to establish a tiered system of supports in the area of social-emotional health to include instructional strategies for each tier, screening, goal-setting, and progress monitoring. One of our big initiatives was re-implementing Second Step, which was a district initiative, and we're really excited to see that it is fully implemented at Hedge School. Weekly lessons are being conducted, and the language is starting to, you can hear the language going throughout the school, which is really nice. We continue to offer our Hedge Experiences through our PBIS initiative. This is really fun at Hedge School. Four staff members volunteer to do a mentor experience with students. For example, they might do, make smoothies with the kids, or play basketball, or Legos, or different fun activities. Instead of earning prizes, they're earning experiences. And they get to earn Hedge Kid Tickets for being safe, respectful, and responsible. And you can see there's these little envelopes with our moon and our rocket ship over there, and they get to put their Hedge Kid Tickets in the envelopes. And then there are whole-school meetings, which we have once a month. We pick students, and they get to have a twenty-minute experience with one of our staff members during morning meeting time. So they're not missing instructional time, they're missing their morning meeting time, but they're having a fun experience with a staff member. It's been a big hit. And then all those Hedge Kids Tickets go in this big bag, and at our academic award ceremonies, which we have each trimester, we still pick twelve kids to do Pizza with the Principal. So we just had our first Pizza with the Principal. We had twelve children. We created a cafe atmosphere in the library, and students donated a pizza for us. So that's still fun. We also worked with Response Center for Responsive Classroom, which has been one of our school improvement plan initiatives. And we had a woman come out and do an implementation assessment for us, and she looked at the four areas of responsive classroom. And we received a two-point-four-two score out of a three-point-zero. She identified effective management as our strongest asset, and that she gave us the area of developmentally-responsive teaching to be an area to look into, and Mrs. Greenwood will be speaking to that later on. We also created our SEL, a Social Emotional Learning Intervention Protocol for the RTI process, and we are very excited that the district adopted Panorama at the elementary level because we will be utilizing Panorama to create those intervention plans instead of our protocol that we created. And our child-study team will be attending a second training, January fifteenth, that Dr. Kea will provide, organized for us. So we do benefit from having a VCBA that comes to our school once a week for a couple hours, and we have a full-time registered behavior technician that's been able to really make an improvement in our climate and culture of students with social-emotional needs in creating routines and structures, implementing behavior plans that has really helped students be able to access their learning. Then, our fourth goal was to increase engagement of all Hedge families in the life of the school community. We were really thrilled with the progress of this goal. One of the largest assets for us was the hiring of Mari Costa, our bilingual translator. With fifty-two families that speak Brazilian Portuguese, it's been a challenge to communicate with families, simple as pick up, like someone's needs are right, someone's sick, to having parent-teacher conferences, to behavior concerns, discipline issues. It's to be able to have someone that can help bridge that communication has made a huge improvement for our school. And when we track parent engagement, we offer multiple means of engagement. So there's electronic emails, dojo, seesaw, which can be translated in whatever language families choose. We also have our translator, we have parent engagement activities, family activities, curriculum celebrations. Ninety-eight percent of our students had one, a family member attend at least one event throughout the year. And often, it's many of that, and those are the events that we have tracked attendance. So we are very proud of that percentage. Last December, our parent-teacher conference rate was eighty-four percent. So eighty-four percent of our students had a family member attend a parent-teacher conference. And we're looking, we haven't finished because of the snow day. We're still making up those conferences, so we're hoping that the number is fairly close. This year, for our fifty-two families, we reserved Mari for three days, and we spent three days meeting with families so that we could have parent-teacher conference with our families that speak Portuguese. So big success. We just set up a schedule, and everyone, we hired a sub to relieve teachers so that they could come and join in the parent-teacher conferences. It was a great success. Our open house attendance was, we did decrease our attendance this year. We're finding that families that have multiple children and multiple things going on in the community have to make a decision which activity they're going to prioritize. As a mother of three, I've been there myself and haven't attended many open houses, but there were other things going on in the district this particular year that I know took away from some families to be able to attend. So our next, now I'd like to switch over to our new school improvement plan. And we were, we spent a lot of time as a council, our leadership team, our staff, really trying to create a solid document that would help guide us, move us to where we want to go. So we spent some time creating a vision. We really re-looked at our vision, and we looked at our theory of action and how we were going to get where we wanted to go. So the Hedge School community thrives to increase academic achievement and reduce the achievement gap for all learners through the implementation of universally-designed instruction in an inclusive education setting. So we truly believe that all students can learn in our school environment. And to do this, we fought for our theory of action. If we follow the guiding principles of responsive classroom, the approach, and incorporate the frameworks of UDL, then all staff will be better prepared to address the variability of student behavioral and learning needs, which will result in an increase of achievement for all learners. So tonight, my fellow school council members will be sharing our action of how we're going to do that over the next few years. So we'll get to our four goals, which is very similar to our four goals from last round, which is increase academic achievement, increase social-emotional learning, increase parent and community engagement, and staff and peer leadership. And we will begin with Mrs. Nicole Manfred on increasing academic achievement for all learners. Move the mic over to you, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a cold, so I'm not sounding myself. So I'm going to address goal number one, which is to increase academic achievement for all learners through the implementation of universally-designed instruction. As Kristen mentioned earlier, I'm the UDL coach in the building and have not only gone through the UDL one-on-one course, but I've also taken the graduate level class. I'm going to actually talk about that a little bit later. So we're talking about some of the initiatives that we have, excuse me, in place to increase academic achievement. And the first one is academic rigor. Teachers and staff continue to set standards and provide materials and scaffolds that encourage academic rigor. We're looking for that zone always of proximal development, challenging students to think, perform, and to make choices to push their learning. Teachers continue to make time for standards-based collaborative planning, reviewing standards, and to be sure that all instruction aligns. We're currently using the STAR Math Computer Adaptive Program to track student growth. This is new to us this year. It's an online program that provides a variety of reports that can be used to identify gaps in student learning and identify focus skills, which we in turn use for our RTI. Kristen talked about Panorama, that, as you know, is a web-based RTI protocol tool for academics and social-emotional tracking, as well as attendance monitoring. We've been continuing to have monthly attendance meetings with our attendance officer, which has proven successful. Of course, instructional coaches are important. We continue to meet, teachers continue to meet with them on best practices. Going back to our E.L. population, it continues to grow. So we continue to balance that complex need of E.L. learners. They currently remain in the classroom for the majority of the day where they are exposed to academic language and given scaffolds to access their curriculum. E.L. students also currently receive pull-out instruction, and that focuses typically on wordwork, vocabulary, and explicit reading instruction. We hope to move forward towards a more inclusive model for E.L. students through the UDL practices. And lastly, a variety, there's a variety of UDL training options being offered for folks through the Tier One Academy. We're offering the, our P.D. and our faculty meetings always have a UDL component. I took the graduate class this year. Another third-grade teacher, Katie Tessitore, is also taking the graduate class in with the hopes that next fall, we will be able to team-teach a graduate class for anyone, any teachers in the district. We're looking to get more information on UDL. The next slide just kind of shows, I'm trying to keep up with my slides and your slides at the same time. Standards, standard-based learning objectives. Teachers are posting clear objectives that define what each child should be able to know and do by the end of each lesson. These objectives align with the state's standards, and generally are statements that start with, "I will be able to." Oh, you're doing that. I thought Mr. Gravy was doing that. Oh, good. I can just whack you. Okay. The next slide shows, that's actually a representation of a math menu. Last year, three, the grade-three teachers were trained in math workshop, and this year, grade four, that's my grade, is currently being trained. And we're kind of fortunate in that a lot of the teachers at Hedge have been using the workshop model for a long time. So this wasn't new for us. The current workshop model is, is more updated. This updated model begins with a number talk or a number sense routine, followed by a brief mini-lesson. And then students are provided a choice menu, which is what you see here, of practice activities while teachers continue to work in small groups on identified skills or RTI strategy groups, IEP goals, those kinds of things. And students may be working independently, or they might be working collaboratively, talking and sharing their mathematical thinking. I think that's my last one.
So Abigail Greenwood will be doing goal number two.
I will be speaking about goal number two, which is to increase social and emotional learning by following the principles of the responsive classroom model. I have to say, as a school, we really did a great job adopting responsive classroom through ongoing training for our people who have had the first-level courses to second-level courses, training new staff members. It's been really fantastic that it's going throughout the school. One of, the idea behind responsive classroom is that in order for students to be successful, they need to have and develop social and emotional competencies to be able to be successful with academic skills. We were able to participate in a growth profile called Play Scope where we had a trainer from responsive classroom come in and take sort of representation sample of what was happening in our building. It was really great to get a fresh set of eyes on the building and see how our implementation was going. We were really, really proud of those scores. Our overall score, as Mrs. Wilson had pointed out, was a two-point-four-one out of three-point-oh for implementation, and that was after a pretty short implementation time, two years. So they were impressed. So, they were impressed with how quickly the implementation had rolled out. The growth profile also helped us identify specific areas that we can look at and really target. And those are going to be areas that we look at through professional development. It also goes along nicely with universal design, just really specific areas that we can target to increase our scores. The hope is that we can repeat the Pyto Scope, repeat that experience, perhaps using staff numbers in our building to take sort of that look at the whole building and see if we can do some self-assessment as well to repeat that experience, to see if our scores can increase. Ultimately, that would mean a reduction of office referrals, behavioral and emotional issues that would lead to more time on task and more academic time. A second part of what we're looking to do, we are, you know, we've fully adopted and implemented the Second Step Curriculum, which is new, the newest version, but we're really doing it with fidelity. We're checking in at grade level team meetings that I think was a Saturday cycle, you said. We're constantly checking in to see what lesson are we on to make sure. So that check-in is just keeping everyone accountable to that. The language across the building is between responsive classroom, between Second Step Curriculum, and how far we've come with the PBIS initiative. We have a lot of common language within the school, which helps students as they move from one area to the next, particularly during lunch and recess. Those, you know, those can be tricky times for kids. So using the same language, having the same expectations has been very helpful. We are excited to further use the Panorama platform that we've been introduced to this year. We've already completed the social emotional screeners and teacher surveys for students in our buildings. We hope to do that again. And we've started to use what we can to develop our intervention plans on that platform. So that's a great tool. We're excited about how we can use it further in the future. And you spoke already about the PBIS initiative, continuing on our monthly whole school meetings to develop our positive climate. And we will be working to establish a whole school kindness project that we haven't gotten started yet, but that is part of our next, our next cycle.
Thank you. And to share out on goal number three, Mrs. Lisa Bissette.
So, goal number three is to increase the parent and community engagement through varied opportunities. Our plan to help meet these goals include the following. Sorry. I'm slacking. So, creating a menu of options and somewhat aligned with a brochure form for parent involvement within the head school community. Providing a universally designed One School, One Book program that's accessible to all families, especially to include the ones where English is not their primary language. Offering a parent book club for parents using the text Let Them Thrive by Katie Novak, which is a book that provides a parent with a practical understanding of how education works and how it can work better for their children. Sharing parenting tips and strategies with families through various communications, including social media. We continue to provide translated communication for families with Portuguese as their first language. Collaboration with the Plymouth Family Network to offer parent and child activities such as our yoga. And continued collaboration with the Zion Lutheran Church's Early Literacy Volunteer Program. We have eight volunteers who come weekly and help our kindergarten and first grade rooms. So this is One School, One Book. So each year, our school reads the same book. Each family receives a copy of the book and every day, chapters are assigned for students to read with their families. At school, there are always trivia questions to keep them engaged. And after the book is finished, the school does a big celebration for completing that book. So if we can get this on a video for our families that don't really speak English as their first language, to help them and their families stay up to par with it. And we offered a parent education program in collaboration with the Plymouth Family Network, where they contracted with Fountains for Kids and offered a six-week, six-week parent and child program for twelve families. Students remained after school with yoga instructors, and after having a small snack, they participated in a yoga class. Parents arrived around four fifteen and met with one of the instructors to learn about the yoga skill of the day. And after that, the parents and children joined for a parent-child activity connected to the yoga practice of that day.
That was a great success. We were very grateful for the Plymouth Family Network for collaborating with us on that. In regards to the One School, One Book, we're currently working to record chapters. Our library information technology teacher has been doing that, and she's actually going to be, if she hasn't already, reach out to all of you to see if you would be willing to read a chapter for us that we'll be sharing out through email and Facebook posts with families so that they can listen to the book, if they would choose to do it that way. So kids don't even have to have a parent to read the story to them, they can. Escape from Mr. Lomencello's Library, which is a really fun book. It's kind of like Jurassic Park meets Willy Wonka's Chatter Factory. And there's hundreds, hundreds of books mentioned throughout the book and there's clues in, for the kids to try to solve. So it should be really, should be really fun. We're really excited. We have a team that's been working on it for months, so. It's not going to be as elaborate as Mr. Harold's One School, One Book celebrations, but we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can. Maggie Wright was one of our other school council members who wasn't able to join us tonight, so Mrs. Manfredi is going to go over goal number four for us.
So I'm actually going to talk about the peer leader program in another slide. We've talked about the UDL team, we've talked about leadership. We do have some student mentors, some of the older students in the building, after assessing the student strengths, they're paired up with younger students, and they're working with them supporting the technology and the art room and the library. And also, also recently had had a group of artist students come from the high school and to work with students on reading and writing, sorry. And they happened to be bilingual and spoke Portuguese. So it was kind of cool. We kind of moved them around classrooms and they, they got to sit with younger students and just read to them. And it was just kind of a nice treat to have. We don't usually have the opportunity to have someone in there, speaking with them in their native language. So, if you could pop the next slide. So this is our new pineapple chart. Instructional rounds are a big part of UDL, and this was one of my big takeaways from the graduate class that I participated in. And there was a lot of discussion around effective instructional rounds and so that they didn't feel evaluative. Folks, you know, we talked about teacher buy-in and how they really had to buy into the idea of sharing ideas and that you're not, you're not looking, I mean, you might have a focus that you're looking for, but you're there in a positive way. And so, it was kind of a really specific way to rule out the instructional rounds. This is just one example. It's called a pineapple chart. The idea is that the pineapple is the universal sign for welcome. And it's done differently in lots of schools, but what we've done is, one week a month, we offer staff the opportunity to, there's little slips, to fill out something that they would like to share. So some time in their day, in that time period of a week, whether it's a lesson or a strategy or, or it could be anything they're proud of, and post it on the board on the time and day that they'll be offering that, that presentation or that teaching skill. And folks sign up to kind of watch, and they don't need to be there for the whole lesson. They can be for five minutes, it can be for fifteen minutes. And Kristin somehow magically gets coverage for these teachers, and it's just been a really cool thing. We've had two rounds. The first year, we're just going to stick to what we want to share and just get folks comfortable with being in classrooms and not feeling that pressure of somebody kind of being there for a reason and watching them for some reason other than getting great ideas. Going forward, the idea behind the instructional rounds is to come up with a focus that's aligned with the school improvement plan. So it might be a UDL strategy, it might be a responsive classroom initiative, where teachers would then go in and visit looking for a specific focus. We bring those ideas back to the leadership team and then develop professional development around what you see or what you want to see more of or what we'd like to see more of. So it's been, it's been super fun. We, we had a long conversation about what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. So if a lesson doesn't go well, that's not why we're there. You know, you're not there to criticize your teammates, and it, and it doesn't feel like that. It feels very, just kind of welcoming and we all can, the best PD is being in someone else's classroom, and we all have things that we can learn and grow from. So it's been pretty neat. That will evolve, I would imagine, over time. And then, the last slide shows, I had notes on this because I'm not, oh. This is in collaboration with the Rotary Club's educational program, Early Act. Our third grade teacher, Katie Testatory, is meeting weekly with a group of grade five students on a variety of mentoring projects that focus on school, local community, and the global community. On Tuesday of last week, they had a hot cocoa fundraiser and they raised two hundred and eleven dollars for the Children's Hospital. So it's just kind of a nice opportunity for these kids to be leaders in the school community. You have to talk about the book. The book box.
So the Rotary Club donated this wonderful book box for our community. One of the members came and put it in the ground for us, and it's just one of those community book boxes, so kids can take a book, give a book. They also, we have a landscaper that's a Rotarian who will be coming out and putting some really nice stones and landscaping timbers around it. And we have a second grade teacher, Mrs. Smith, who's been working on kindness rocks. It's actually one of her experiences that she uses for the PBIS initiative. So then we'll be putting kindness rocks out there. We had a contest in the school for a sign that will be going out there for our kindness rock garden, and so that will, it's already been made, it's beautiful, and that will be out there as well. So those are some of the projects that our peer mentors hopefully will be working with. And we do have a Rotarian that meets with Miss Testatory with the students, and they meet bi-weekly. So we're really excited to re-implement a peer leader program, but also recreate it with collaboration with our Rotarian Rotary Club. So, we're hoping that through all of this work that we're doing, that we are going to continue to increase our achievement scores on MCAS, that we will continue to increase our benchmark data, including our Fountain of Honor benchmark scores, our math performance on the STAR assessment, our SEL proficiency on Panorama, and continue to decrease our absenteeism, which we're very proud of, our work that we've done with that. So we've enjoyed sharing a lot about our, our small little school in North Summit, and thank you for allowing us to come present with you tonight. I'd like to thank Mrs. Manfredi for putting this really cool presentation together for us. We tried to do something different and it went really well. So thank you, Hope, for doing this for us.
Well, thank you. Some, some really good initiatives, some really exciting things that you've shared with us this evening. I could, there's so many to cite. I, I'm so excited about the, the increase of family involvement to such a high level. What was it, ninety-six or something? Something really up there. That, that's amazing to get people to, especially in a, in a community where people have to work late and get, you know, difficult to get people into the schools. The, the give, share a book, give a book, take a book. Why is there an owl on top of it? What is the, what is the? Owls aren't very friendly creatures, that's why.
The wise owl. They, they had someone had created some, there was a Snoopy, there was an owl, and they just picked that one for us. They felt that that was the best fit for us.
All right. Any other, any other questions or comments from committee members? Ms. Badger.
I just have to echo the same things that Dr. Sorenson said. It's exciting to hear all the initiatives and everything that you guys are doing at the school. So, my question is from slide six where you shared your, your data. When you, and I know you're a very transient school, so I know it's hard to really look at that MCAS data.
It really is.
But when you kind of dig deep into that and see your students that you're taking from third to fourth, fifth, are you seeing that same decrease, or are you seeing those students a little bit more flatlined or even doing better?
It's just. Really all over the place.
Okay.
So we've spent hours going through the data.
Sure.
Hours. We actually have, I have a spreadsheet that identifies the students that were enrolled in our school. And every time a student leaves, I pull them out of that data.
Yep.
And we looked at the trend over time, and, and they really do remain constant.
Yeah.
Some of our students that come into the school perform really well.
Yes.
Some don't. Our English language population is, you know, has, they actually are doing really well. They might not be making the achievement scores, but they're making progress. So we did have some staff changes last year that really, I feel, really hindered our progress last year. So we feel we're a little bit more stable right now, and we're looking forward to some increases this year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Houghton. I just, I love all the initiatives. I love this, I mean, the small school community is amazing, and I, I just Googled pineapple chart, and there's a whole rabbit hole on Pinterest that you can go down, so.
Yeah, she knows.
Because I'm trying to think of my own.
I wonder what you want to change it.
I know, I'm trying to think of even my own job, like, this is great, I want to do this. So, and I, you know, I thank you too. This is the first year I had a chance to attend your Thanksgiving celebration, and I wish that I had gone sooner because it was just fantastic. And I, I sat with one of your Zion volunteers, and we had the best conversation, and, and you're lucky that you've got people in the community like that that can, you know, she doesn't have any kids in the school, she's not even from here, and she really cares about the kids and the school, and I think it's just a testament to everything that you guys are doing. So, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
All right, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you. Great, great information.
Nice job.
I am going to take an agenda item out of order here and do the field trip next. There's, there are people here waiting for the field trip, so they don't have to listen to the Medicaid discussion. No, no offense.
Not that he won't enjoy it. Perhaps he'll stick.
No idea.
Dr. Maestis.
Yes, this is a field trip that is connected with the Plymouth 400. Dr. Campbell and has been very involved with this as far as, as well as Mr. Powers, of trying to create an opportunity with Leiden, Netherlands, and we're excited to bring this in front of school committee. One of the things that we've been trying to do for probably a couple of years now is trying to bring field trips that have significant connection to the, to the school system, as well as looking at cost, to try to minimize cost. And I think this, this is one of those field trips that you'll see is really connected. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Powers, and I know Dr. Campbell may want to chime in, so.
Great, good evening. It's good to be back. Another month, another country. So, you have in front of you, I believe, all the, the supporting documents and the request paperwork, but if I could just summarize very quickly what this project is about and what we're trying to do. We were approached last spring by our colleagues in Leiden through Dr. Maestis and connections we have with Plymouth 400 and Leiden 400 as well, to try to develop a, a history project around the commemoration of the four-hundredth anniversary of the Mayflower Voyage. So, in October, Dr. Campbell and I visited Leiden for a few days to meet with our colleagues over there, Jonathan and Susan, who are working with Leiden Marketing and Leiden 400 to put together the educational components of the commemoration on the side for Leiden. And we spent two days hashing out, actually working off of a very great framework that they had already developed, and we had, we had looked at through Google Docs for a couple of months, but hashing out what we are really excited to put in front of you as the Hour 400 Challenge. So what this essentially boils down to is this, we were looking for an opportunity to do a few things. Address the, the challenge of commemoration around a four-hundredth anniversary of a major historical event that ties four different nations together, and also connect our students as global citizens. So, having students working together transatlantic on that project. So what we envision happening is this, with your approval, we will launch soon after the new year, an interest forum for students to sign up voluntarily as an extracurricular activity for the spring semester, both high schools, to participate in the Hour 400 Challenge, and the same will happen in Leiden, and then we will pair students up into teams of six. So each team will have three students from either Plymouth South or Plymouth North, and three students from a school in Leiden. And over the course of the spring semester, with support from historians here and also So each team will have three students from either Plymouth South or Plymouth North and three students from a school in Leiden. And over the course of the spring semester, with support from historians here and also in Leiden and educators in each of the schools and myself, the students will be tasked with addressing the compelling question, how should we commemorate the 400th anniversary of the migration history of the Mayflower? So it's this idea like I presented in the program presentation in the spring of giving students big, ambitious, compelling questions, providing them with sources, but really leaving it up to them to decide how they're going to use those sources to address that question. So it's going to be structured in a way that we will be providing them with support throughout the semester and they'll be engaging in design thinking. So they are given a task and they're going to have to develop a prototype. As a team, they're going to work synchronously and asynchronously. We have an online collaboration platform that the Netherlands uses that we're going to hop onto as well. And the idea is that by the end of the semester, each of the teams will have developed a prototype of what they believe best represents how they should commemorate this anniversary. And then we will be developing a jury of folks from both sides to jury those projects. And the top two projects will be invited to like a semifinal stage. And that's where the travel component comes in. So in September of 2020, the six students from Leiden that are part of those two teams will come over here to Plymouth for about five or six days. They will stay with the students that they've been working with throughout the semester. They'll have a chance to visit all the local historical sites, but also have a few days with their peers to really get feedback from experts on their project and refine that project for the second part, which is the final stage, when our students would travel to Leiden in early November 2020. And they would have a little bit more time for refinement with their peers on their projects and then eventually present those projects and be awarded, the winning project will be awarded in a public ceremony in Leiden. So it's an ambitious project, we're really excited about it. I think you'll note under question two in the field trip application questions that this really addresses all of the components of the global learning initiative that we're putting forth here in Plymouth Public Schools. The perspectives of other people, understanding how human interactions influence issues and history, identifying opportunities for collaborative action. And then my favorite part of this is the idea of taking action, both locally and globally, around a really important contemporary issue. So, very exciting because we don't, we don't get a lot of these opportunities. Yelling into my watch. And it, that's what I said, interesting. So we don't get a lot of opportunities to do this deep of learning in this type of opportunity, especially either transatlantic like this, so we're really excited.
This is a very exciting field trip. This really is.
This is a cool one, yeah.
I just, I was reading it and I was, again, jealous of all these opportunities that these kids have. But I just, it's wonderful, I'm so, it was so nice to read about design thinking. I know like my undergrad just started, he's a freshman, you have to take the class and a lot of schools are doing that because, I mean, it's the new way to, I don't know, it's not the new way to think, but it's a different way to learn how to think, I guess. So that's really exciting that we're exposing these students to that and to expose them to that like transatlantic, like cultural, kind of global sharing of ideas because that's where they're going to be and it's really exciting. So, thank you for, thank you for doing this and putting this together.
Mr. Morgan.
I see it's the week of November 6th, so that's a school week, isn't it?
Yes, so we took a look at, so we're threading a needle here, right? Because there are some significant events at the end of November 2020 here.
Yes.
So what we try to do is we have them departing Friday evening. So they would be attending school that day on Friday, all the flights overnight. And then what this shakes down to is because there's a holiday the following week from school.
The 11th, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, it's Veterans Day and, but that makes it so they'll only miss three days of school.
Okay.
They should be back on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, we tried to leverage the calendar the best we could.
So let me understand what you said before, so you're going to be, after the holidays of this academic year, you're going to invite students to a, to a meeting?
Yes, so they'll fill out a Google form in January. And then by the end of January, early February, there'll be a meeting either after school or during advisory block where we'll introduce the project to them. And in the meantime, we're going to be working with the teachers at both high schools and also with our teacher colleagues in Leiden to try to pair the teams up so that we're getting not only a diverse perspective of say, you know, across both high schools, but we actually talked about one of the planning sessions, how needed it is. We don't get a lot of opportunities to have, say, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade students to work, you know, vertically in a team. So they'll be paired up so that in February, they'll be given their challenge, they'll be given their teams and the contact information for their peers in Leiden.
So the five hour time difference shouldn't be too much of a problem?
It shouldn't be too much, and this is where it gets interesting, right? With design, because this is design thinking in some ways too, is we have this kind of prototype of how we wish to scaffold it. We're going to give them some suggested tasks to do along the way. And there's a video conferencing platform that our colleague Remay in Leiden uses with his students that's kind of like Zoom or Skype, but it's for educational purposes, so like a teacher could join or it's archived for the teacher to see, et cetera. So there will be opportunities, say, with that five hour difference, if it's right after school or it's a quick meeting during, you know, advisory block to do synchronous meetings. But they'll also leverage Google Docs to do some asynchronous work.
Okay. How many teams you think you're hoping to have?
The proposal is ambitious, we'd love to see 15.
15 teams?
Yeah, so, but we'll see what we get.
Wow, I think it's great, fantastic. Ms. Hunt.
I know we have a lot of events planned for the 400th too. And I know there's a whole education committee that I think that you're working with.
Yeah, yeah, I work with them.
Or a subcommittee and, you know, I don't know what you're planning, but maybe when this is all over, it would be really cool to have a community, like forum, panel. And we can present to the community, to not just the school community, all the things that we did schoolwide.
Yes, that's a good idea.
And just have an opportunity for people to come and see exactly the kind of things and the out of the box things that we did. I know you're probably already planning it, but I just think it's a great outreach to the community too, to let them know exactly what we are doing.
Dr. Campbell.
So the timing of the students from Leiden, their visits actually aligned with the week that the embarkation festival will be taking place? So that was a deliberate thought there? So there's an opportunity to try to find a way to bring this to a more public appearance in that regard, getting back to what you said. And one thing I want to add, maybe it was two really great, solid days of planning. We also worked with the professor from the University of Leiden and who really kicked it off with the whole design thinking piece. Rob was in his element, you know, around a number of historians, it was great. And had an opportunity to go to the archives and see some family records, which was really cool. But I want, one thing that we didn't say is our objective with this project is for our, the six students that become finalists when they go, is for the cost to be covered for their trip.
Yeah, something that we find appealing about this is given the scale of it and being six students is Dr. Campbell and I are very committed to working with stakeholders to make this hopefully free.
Yeah, Leiden 400 is doing that for the students coming over here. So we feel it's equally important to make that a priority for us as well.
Clearly a lot of work's gone into this proposal. Ms. Badger.
You know, that was going to be part of my question. My other question is, so when they have to apply, their parents have to agree to host? Is that part of the application? Because obviously that's a, that's another level.
Yes, so it's a great question. And what we'll probably do is there'll be kind of two tiers to this, if you will. So in, as part of the beginning of this project and applying, we would be transparent with students that, you know, it's our hope that you would also host the students from your team when they arrive. We don't want that to be a barrier to participation. So what it would be is kind of that second leg of this is should those students be chosen to participate in that semifinal, final stage? Then we would engage it the same way we do with the Milan trip. We would get that confirmation from the parents, make sure that that's something that's still doable on the end for the Leiden student. And then we would go through the same protocol as far as background checks and all the safety stuff as well.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an action item, so I'm going to entertain a motion. Ms. Hunt.
I'll move that the proposed Plymouth PNHS and PSHS High Schools, Leiden Plymouth Migration History Challenge and International Field Trip to Leiden, Netherlands be accepted and approved as presented.
You've heard the motion, seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any questions on the motion? Okay, it'll be time to vote on it then. All right, please report, everybody voted in favor, thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Okay, Medicaid update, I've been waiting for this all day.
Well, you know, hold on, hold the suspense for another half hour or so. Anyway, tonight we have our special education director who works closely with Medicaid, along with some of her staff and Mr. Costin. They have anticipated this for a while now and we do have some details on how it will impact the district. Tonight, their presentation will give the school committee and the general community at large information relative to Medicaid reimbursement, which is, it does bring in revenue for the town, as I mentioned before. We don't see, that goes to help pay bills in the town, but we do do a lot of work. Our staff does a great deal of work to be able to recoup those expenses. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Rogers and she can, or Dr. Rogers, she can run through the presentation. And then I guess Mr. Costin's going to support her tonight.
Hi, I'm Stacy Rogers, I'm the Director of Special Education. I also oversee the school-based Medicaid program in the district. You've been hearing a lot over the last couple of meetings about how some of our revenue sources have decreased and this is just another example of that. I'm going to apologize in advance for a lot of educational and medical jargon in the presentation, but I do try to sum it up at the end. So we just, I think I can hit this, oh, yay. This is just a brief description of what the school-based Medicaid program is. It offers local educational agencies an opportunity to receive federal money to offset the cost of providing Medicaid-covered services within school-based settings. Approximately $101 million across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There's approximately 338 local educational agencies that participate. Schools can seek reimbursement for direct healthcare services through a direct claiming process. And there are certain administrative costs associated with the provision of medical services. In July 2019, they came out with a Medicaid expansion bill, which sounded wonderful to all of us because we thought it was going to be additional revenue sources. And while they did expand it, it came with a lot of burdensome bureaucratic red tape in order to sort of access those funds. So that's the tricky part that we're still kind of trying to figure out. So we are expecting, although we don't know, we are expecting a decrease in our funds for the upcoming fiscal year. So what does Medicaid expansion mean? Previously, in order to claim Medicaid reimbursement, a student had to be on an IEP. That is now lifted. So a student on a 504, students on healthcare plans or any other medical necessities such as school-based screenings, vision, dental, nutrition, those kinds of things can now be claimed. They've also added to their practitioner pool, which includes now school psychologists, optometrists, nutritionists, dental hygienists. Some of the problem is that typically, local schools don't have nutritionists or dental hygienists on their staff. So even though it's expanded, it's really difficult for a public school to access some of the additional funds. So again, dental screenings, nutrition, vision, audiology, and behavioral mental health services. This is just a list of the providers. Some of the traditional ones, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy. They've added the ABA, they've added audiology, dental, nutrition, behavioral screening, skilled nursing, which is why Carol is still here. Any questions for the nursing staff? Vision, and they've added psychological counseling. So it sounds like it's expanded, but like I said, there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape that goes along with that, which is making it a little bit challenging to be able to access those funds. So these are the new service requirements. All service, all practitioners and administrators must be in the direct service pool and must be eligible to participate in time studies. So on a random basis, emails are sent out and people have to participate in a random moment in time study, which is whatever you're doing on March 5th at 10 o'clock in the morning. However, some of the people who were previously in the administrative pool have now been moved to the direct service pool and some of their requirements have changed. LEAs must produce a practitioner qualification. Supervision is, they specifically state that supervision is not a substitute for licensure. So in the past, we were able to bill, so if a paraprofessional or a teacher was, you know, helping a student with their physical therapy or occupational therapy during lunch or snack, those kinds of things, we are now not able to bill for those services. You have to have a specific license for that area in order to bill. LEAs must be able to demonstrate medical necessity. This is probably the biggest change. So I'm going to read directly from this and again, I apologize for all the medical jargon, but. So it needs to be reasonably calculated to prevent diagnoses, prevent, worsen, alleviate, correct, cure, condition in the member of an endangered life caused suffering or pain due to physical deformity or malfunction, threaten to cause or aggravate a handicap result or injury or infirmity, infirmary. Services must be most conservative and least costly and services must require the clinical expertise of the practitioner. So those are pretty heavy-duty standards, especially for school-based therapists that don't operate under a medical model. We are now required for service authorization from all children and not just on student on IEP. So in addition to being on an IEP or having healthcare plan or receiving any of these services, the parents also have to sign off on an authorization form. So we're in the process now of getting those forms back. And the requirement for students to be on Mass Health is also a continued requirement. Authorization requirements are distinct from decisions made in IEP. So in other words, you know, you could have a student on an IEP who requires physical therapy three times 30 minutes a week. If a physical therapist, let's say a kid breaks his leg on the football field and requires some physical therapy coming back, the student wouldn't necessarily require an IEP for that, but we could have one of our school-based physical therapists help that student navigate the building and that is now billable. And then there are additional documentation requirements. Mass Health doesn't tell you how they want you to store the data. Dr. Maestas had said earlier, we do use UMass as part of our data requirements to store and house all of the data. And that's what, I mean, our Plymouth particularly uses. So written authorization, this is an above and beyond an IEP. We used to be able to use IEPs as a written authorization, now it has to be a separate document. A lot of the information is the same, but it is somewhat redundant, it needs to be a specifically separate form. The biggest change for us is the diagnosis and reason for the order. So a lot of our students, while they require OT or PT, we don't always have a doctor's diagnosis as to why they need it. And so that's a little bit tricky for us because we're not doctors, we're not medical professionals, we don't diagnose students. We operate under the educational model of the nine areas of disability based on the Department of Education. So documentation, documentation, documentation. LEAs are responsible for creating and maintaining a comprehensive treatment record and other documentation. It must be consistent with standard practices of the clinical realm, which again, we're not a hospital setting, so that's difficult for us to put into place. LEAs are responsible for compliance with federal and state laws regarding documentation, billing, and coding. And we're also responsible for the random moment in time studies, which, that's actually a pretty easy one for us. We do a really good job making sure that people participate in that. This is also a big change for Medicaid. So modifiers, as far as IEPs, out of district, day school, residential schools, we've always been doing that. That's not a change. Another big change is that we are now required to use diagnostic international classifications on all claims. So it's really an insurance-based model. And again, it's not something that school-based therapies participate in. We also don't require that parents provide us with a physician's order or a medical diagnosis. So as a physical therapist, if you notice that a student has, you know, a particular gait and they're having issues with the stairs, we can just go in right now and provide that service for students. But now in order to, for it to be Medicaid billable, we need a physician's order with a diagnosis. And a more formalized treatment plan above and beyond an IEP. So this is just a cheat sheet that tries to summarize the new requirements with the impact on our staff. So the new requirements on the left, the impact on our staff and ability to claim is on the right. So again, proof of medical necessity, which is now required. As a school-based provider, our services are not considered medically necessary. School-based therapy is based on a student's ability to access and participate in progress in their educational program. ICD-10 diagnoses codes must accompany all claims. As schools, we don't have formal diagnostic codes from a physician. These are codes assigned by medical doctors and not school-based therapists. Claims can only be submitted if the service authorization and delivery is provided by a licensed provider, and these are licenses that are above and beyond the Department of Education. These are licenses that are provided by the Department of Public Health. We can no longer claim services that are being performed by paraprofessionals or teachers. Services must be delivered by licensed practitioners. Medically-based intervention plans. So previously, IEPs could be used as an intervention plan. New regulations now require a separate document in order to be able to claim those funds. More detailed data input and storage and retention of records and documentation. So it's also been an increase of the amount of data that needs to be put into the UMass system. This is an additional step in the documentation of services, which is now required for all claims. And then the random moment in time, the pool member changes. So members, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, members who were originally part of a practitioner pool are now administrators and administrators. So they kind of did a little bit of a flip-flop with the different roles that people have in the Medicaid pool. So this is just additional requirements that they're imposing. So claim submissions, record-keeping and retention, data management, confidentiality, fiscal responsibility, and additional parental consent. So the bottom line, school-based Medicaid has become heavy with administrative and medical requirements, which have changed the scope of what school-based providers do for our students. Moreover, it's hindering their ability to see and service students, which is our primary responsibility. So they're spending a lot more time documenting, inputting data, and we're really held to the student's IEP. So we can't forego the services in the IEP in order to make sure that they're inputting data for Medicaid. I just want to say, Chris Freitas, who's in my office, manages all of the Medicaid for the district. It is an unbelievable task, and she just does an amazing job. We definitely couldn't do as good a job without her, so I just wanted to mention how valuable she is in that role. And Gary's going to talk a little bit about the money part.
If I can bring up those, I don't know if I can bring up those sheets.
The Excel spreadsheets from the beginning of the presentation? Thank you.
Oh, you want the ones that are in the agenda item? I bring my, I can bring my. No, no, let me bring my computer over there. It's plugged in the EPM.
Sorry. So.
It's in the agenda.
It's in the agenda.
Yeah, it's in the agenda item.
It's on the agenda for this item. Okay, it's electronic school board.
So while there's problems figuring that one out, it's. The items, the question is, what does it mean to Plymouth? Not to make it down, bring it down to dollars and cents, because the services that we provide are very, very important services. First, tonight, when we did the, when we provided you the summary of revenue, different revenue from Plymouth, Medicaid was one of those items. And you can see that those numbers are a little bit all over the place, but they've been decreasing for the last three years. Part of the reason that they fluctuate depends on the claim that we submit, and if you kind of bring it down to your, to your own individual one situation, one year you may go to the doctor 10 times and you may have specific needs, and next year you may not, you might be not have to. It really depends on what the students need for that particular year, the needs of the students and services we provide. But aside from that, even if we do provide more services, the reimbursements that we're receiving are going to go down. There's no question about it. That's the trend across the state. It's a talk among special ed directors and business officials for much the same reasons. So the sheet that we put up there, I'm sure you can all read, that's part of our test.
I can't even on my screen.
What we wanted to show you. Is it possible, the next sheet, or does that make it even more complicated? I don't want to do that.
There you go.
But we can stick with the sheet. So this shows you, there are two real umbrellas that we receive Medicaid funds for and how the claims are structured, and those are under administrative and direct services. This sheet that you have right here, that you can hopefully see, some of it, if you go to the far right of it, you're going to see, this is the matrix for how we submit claims and what we keep track of. And really, it's direct services, administrative services, there's capital in there, there's fixed assets, major movable fixed assets, that's if we move the equipment around for the needs of students, there's materials and supplies, there's transportation, and there's out-of-district tuitions. Those fit into the matrix, which has changed for this year and next year to put together the reimbursement for the Plymouth, for Plymouth schools. And if you look up on the far right, which is in yellow, I believe, thank you, you're going to see some nice red numbers. And you're going to see that direct services from 18 to 19 decreased about $28,000. Administrative, $223,000. And ABA providers, $4,000. So that's really making up the bulk of what's happening with our decrease in Medicaid reimbursements. Plymouth is doing a good job, and I can't say enough because I'm involved in it, but it's, we do a really good job claiming every service that we can. Unfortunately, what's happening is that across the state with changing the rules, that certain things are being disqualified and actually other things in the state activity percentages that are in the administrative pool are not what we used to be able to claim. For example, I used to be in the administrative pool because there was a portion of my time that is put into claiming Medicaid. I'm no longer in the pool. So there are a lot of things that have been pulled out, and as Dr. Rogers mentioned, it's more direct services that are being included. So we're not able to claim for those costs anymore. If we can go to the next item, the next spreadsheet, that would be great. So as I said, there's really two umbrellas to try to keep it somewhat simple. Administrative and direct services. You'll see that really what's happened is our claims have gone down primarily in the direct services cost for the last year, and it's about $254,000 total. When we do our budget and we do our projections for next year, the town finance director will ask me, what does Medicaid look like for next year? And I told her, I sent her an email, I would estimate $300,000 decrease. And I base that on these numbers, using FY18 as a baseline. And if we were to go even more dramatic, if you look at the history of Medicaid, we've had years where we've only received $430,000. And that's really a $300,000 decrease from FY19. We can't say for certain what our reimbursements are going to be this year. But I think when we look at it, I know that the finance director, I haven't seen the exact numbers, is taking about a $300,000 reduction in what our Medicaid reimbursements will be. I don't see them increasing. I see us trying to capture as many services as we can, but I think that really, honestly, the state has redirected some of the Medicaid funds to other things, and I know one of the things is they've redirected it towards is the opioid crisis. So it's really not that the pot has increased from the federal government, it's that there's been really, I think, a reallocation and tightening of more direct services for students in the school districts.
Floor is open for discussion, questions, comments. Ms. Hunt.
So at one point, we talked about like family resources and how it was really important that maybe when we did have like things to distribute to families that it came out of your office. So do, I mean, it almost seems like that need is going to be greater now and more, there's going to need to be more information for the parents because they are going to have to go back and get the diagnosis, and they are going to have to have referrals, or they're going to need to know who to go to. So where we did talk about any kind of a family information for the school community that it was going to come out of your office, so it seems to me like that that needs to be a focus with all of this as well.
Yep, so a lot of it is going to be put on the families and the parents to get that, those pieces of paper to us, which is why we're relying quite heavily on the nurses' office, that they use a program called SNAP, and that's where a lot of that is documented. In addition to that, you know, we're now requiring parents to sign off on paperwork, which some of them are reluctant to do because they don't understand that it doesn't impact their mass health.
Right.
You know, it's just a reimbursement for the school district. So a lot of it's education to parents and families that it doesn't impact their mass health coverage. It's not going to impact anything through social security or things like that, but then it's a lot of paper chasing, and again, you know, the nurses are taking on a lot of that in their offices because that's, right now, we don't have another, you know, working with Karen Burnett with Aspen to try to figure out like how we can, how we know that that paperwork exists and where we're housing it so that it's an easier upload. Right now, we have, the only way we have to document that a student has either turned in a piece of paper or has a medical code that we can sort of assign to them is through SNAP. And we know how much we love audits, but given that this is the first year, we can bet pretty fairly that they're going to be out auditing a lot of schools to make sure that they're in compliance with the new regulations, so.
Dr. Maestas.
The other question that you had, Kim, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So my office doesn't see a lot of the funds. I believe it pays for a partial salary of the secretary who does the work. So again, like it's not going to impact necessarily a lot of services on our end, but it will impact the town.
Right.
Dr. Maestas.
For a lot of the reasons that Dr. Rogers highlighted tonight, you know, Plymouth Public Schools, we're a fairly large school district. We have a number of opportunities to look at Medicaid reimbursement because of the size. I believe that there are a lot of districts that are just going to, why even do this? Because one of the things that I'm concerned about is the added work is going to actually pull away from the direct service that we already provide, which we have a primary responsibility. Even now, as we operate under the conditions, prior to this change, a lot of the time that we have logging information and just understanding what counts, what doesn't, and who records it, that takes time from our practitioners. So I would guess or estimate that in the future, we're going to see school districts that have to make hard decisions, should we even participate or not.
I can tell you from my end of it, we're expecting a check from the federal government for this, and if there's one blank or one number missing, the check doesn't come, and then you have to call the patient or the patient's family, and you have to depend upon them to make the fix. And if they don't make the fix, the check never comes. And it's going to be an arduous task to stay on top of this.
Yeah, so those claims get kicked back to us, and then for us, it's, you know, to do the paper chasing and to try to get the document back, and there's no recourse to go back. Like if a parent doesn't sign an IEP, there's a whole process in place with the state. If a parent doesn't provide a diagnosis, which they have no obligation to do so because of HIPAA and FERPA and all those confidentiality regulations, there's no, and there's no incentive for them to provide the paperwork, you know, and another burden on the families as well.
It definitely is. I see it all the time.
Yep.
And especially with the families who English is a second language.
They're just going to need so much help.
So I think, Dr. Maestas, I think your point is well taken, that at some point, there's the law of diminishing returns here. It's bleak. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
We have to adopt some policy fixes tonight. That's to Mr. Campbell and Mr. Morgan. Who's going to take it?
I'll start.
We have five policies for your pleasure this evening to review. Most of them are minor changes. The first one is the policy on authorizations to sign payroll warrants and bills. This is something we started doing years ago. We're just putting it into a policy, which basically allows the chair or a designated to sign the warrant, as opposed to all the members being required to sign the warrant. The language is in your, on electronic school board, and this is, this is a new policy.
That's pretty clear. We'll take them one at a time. Ms. Badger.
My question, maybe just when I was reading it, so it's the, they, both paragraphs are saying the same basic thing on this. Am I reading that correctly? We can designate one or more persons member, and then the other one is we can designate one person to sign the bills. Are they the same?
One says section 56.
Yeah, that's like the difference, is all I can see.
So we.
So that was my question.
Go ahead.
Are we switching out the top paragraph and the bottom with the provisions?
That was my question.
I think that what happened was the Municipal Modernization Act added a clarification that the school committee chairman or whoever is assigned to do that, the one person, may approve bills or payroll warrants. Okay, see, the first part of the section is only payroll. The second is bill schedules.
So the first paragraph, you're saying the authorization to sign the payroll. So one talks about.
Right, my only response is that chapter, I'm sorry, chapter 41, section 41 was not deleted, was not deleted as part of the municipal modernization act.
Okay, all right, I understand.
Yeah, and like the top one says a sign and the bottom one says approval. Now, about a year, a year and a half ago, we changed to only one signature, but we still all approve it. So will this make it only one person has to approve it going forward? Or we still all have to approve it?
The way the law works is that one person, one person or chairman can sign, sign all of the warrants or bill schedules and payroll, but the school committee as a whole has a chance to ask questions or review that payroll.
But we still all vote, we all vote on it?
Correct.
Because this says approval, I think it's a little confusing. It says approval of bills warrants, section 57 to 58, the school committee may designate one of its members to review and approve bills. So that's one of its members, but we're all approving.
Right, the way that it works is that if one member is authorized, that member can come back, can sign and comes back and can report on those, on the bill schedule or the payroll warrant, should the committee have any questions?
It's that last statement with a record of this action provided at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
So it's that last.
The record of action is your vote.
Yeah, but maybe we should clarify that that vote should be the whole committee?
Which is a part of?
Yeah.
Or maybe it's already in there in another part, it just doesn't, we don't have that information perhaps?
Yes, I agree.
Because if you read it, it looks like you can authorize.
Yes, I see how you're signing it. Mr. Morgan, back to you.
Okay.
Do you understand, you understand the confusion?
Yes.
It says one member can review and approve. It shouldn't say one member can review and approve. It says one member can. Sign, and the school committee must approve, or something like that.
Just that last sentence.
Okay, we can take that back to the committee, if you wish, unless someone, I don't know if there's any legal language here that we shouldn't change, or. if there's any, um, legal language here that we shouldn't change or I think we might have to take it back to the committee.
You can take it back.
You want to look at policy, I'm sorry. Policy 13.1, which gets into financial reports and statements.
I'm sorry, Dr. Campbell.
We have another policy on the agenda, financial reports and statements, which I think gets into the cost center transfer and trans, transaction summary reports that come before here each and every meeting.
But-
Would you agree?
This one still needs to be changed.
It just doesn't-
Ms. Badger.
I just think the language isn't clear enough. I mean, I get what, that it's clarified in another place, but the language in this article is probably, isn't clear enough. I mean, even if it just said approval of bills, the school committee may designate one of its members to review and sign bills or payment warrants with a vote at the, on the, the bill or warrant at the next meeting. I, I think that is the clarification. Other, because when I read it, it just, to me with a record of action, Dr. Sorenson, you can just be like, okay, I signed July 19th and then that's it.
And I approved it.
I approved it. Moving on.
Okay. I think, I think the policy committee understands the concern. Let's move on to the next one.
Okay.
We'll work. Work with Mr. Costin on that again.
What?
Mr. Costin, I will consult again.
My, my only comment is that this came from Department of Revenue language, so I'll just double check.
Yeah.
I didn't write this. I won't take credit for it.
Yeah. That was my concern as well, but I appreciate it.
We'll table that one?
We'll table that one.
13.2.
Now, we're not going to table it. We're sending it back to committee.
There you go.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry. Yeah. I said table. I shouldn't.
Go ahead.
All right. Policy 13.2, annual budget. Um, there are two minor additions. Um, um, section one, you'll see that, um, the addition of ensuring that the necessary funds are appropriated for the district when referring to the role of the school committee. And then in section through, uh, section three, the word instrument after budget. Those are the only changes to this policy.
Yeah, discussion on this one? I have a question. I think it's going to go to Mr. Costin. Uh, I'm looking at 2.0 and it says here that, um, the budget will accurately show the proposed allocation of resources among the core centers and school programs in such form as set out by the superintendent or as directed by the school committee. However, during composite presentations, you often say, uh, that we're getting new regulations as to how we can, from the, from the Department of Education. You often say that they're, oh, boy, now we have to do it this way because they've changed it on. So it really isn't just set forth by the superintendent. It's set forth by the superintendent, directed by the school committee, uh, uh, in agreement with regulations set forth by the Department of Education. I think we just, I think we need the Department of Education in there somewhere.
Yeah. I, I, I can understand that. Um, I think what this, this paragraph is saying that is that the school committee and the superintendent are categorizing the budget and they're putting it into cost centers and programs. What the Department of Education sends out to us are function codes and those really fall within cost centers or programs. They really don't add.
All right.
Um, we, we want to be careful how we vote the budget because the budget, that sets how we do budget transfers going forward. You don't want to do it between each individual line item. You want to do it between cost centers and program, but it's well taken.
As you said, the function codes are outlined, are encompassed within the core center. So we don't have to be concerned about that then. Okay. All right. Any other questions on this one? From anybody? Okay. Then we can take a vote on, I'll take a motion to approve the recommendation of the policy committee. Ms. Hunt?
I move that the recommended changes to policy 13.2 annual budget be accepted and approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Pruselli is the second. Any questions? Okay. We should vote on that. Still waiting on one vote. All right. There it is. Uh, everybody approved. Mr. Morgan, back to you.
Um, thank you. Um, the next, um, policy that we have before you is, uh, financial reports and statements, policy 13.1. Uh, copy is in the, um, electronic school board. Uh, section one, um, you will see that, um, the first school committee meeting of each month has been taken out, crossed out. Um, as well as 1.1, you'll see the, um, a summary of operations, expense and salary accounts by schools and services replaced by a summary of the expense and salary accounts by cost center. And then in 1.2, you'll see that a more detailed account of the budget summary is included. And then in 2.0, the addition of object codes after cost centers when speaking to the school committee voting on any transfer of funds between cost centers and object codes that were voted by the school committee as part of the budget adoption process.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve policy 13.1.
Seconded by? Ms. Hunt is the second on that.
Give me one second.
Questions on the motion? I don't see any hands. We'll vote it.
Okay.
Okay. Approved by everybody. And now the final, oh, no, the homeless education. Mr. Morgan.
Correct. Um, the next, um, policy is policy 9.3, homeless education policy. Um, very minor changes here. Particularly, um, you will find that children awaiting foster care placement was struck from the definition of children in youth in transition. Um, protections and obligations pursuant to foster care still exist. Let me point that out. And a separate policy, um, delineating these regulations will be presented at a future meeting. So we have another policy we're looking at that, um, more directly pertains to, um, foster care children.
Mm-hmm.
So that was a concern of the policy committee, but there is another policy that we're actually working on.
Okay.
That affects that directly.
Oh, okay.
Heard the recommendation on policy 9.30. Ms. Badger.
I just have a question and this could be just because of my lack of, um, education on this, but on 2.0, it says, it basically says, um, uh, something, I can't, okay. So those children in youth are defined as otherwise legally entitled to or eligible for appropriate public education, including preschool, and who lack a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence. Is that like a legal definition of what it means to be?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this all came from the regulation. Yes.
Okay. Just for curiosity. Thank you.
Any other questions? So let's open for motion. Ms. Badger moved it, seconded by Ms. Hunt, that we approve, uh, 9.30.
I second it.
Yes.
I saw the hands. They're fast. You got to watch the hands around you. All right.
They were there.
Any questions on the motion?
Oops.
All right. Time to vote.
It's like speeding this people's thing up.
Okay. Everybody approved it. Thank you. And now we, and now we have the budget deadlines. Mr. Morgan.
Um, last but not least, um, policy 13.3, budget deadlines and schedules. Um, you'll see that in section 2.0, reference to public hearing being held not less than seven days after the publication of a notice in a newspaper, having general circulation in town in Plymouth and the Plymouth public website has been added to the, um, policy. And we struck out, um, before it takes a final vote on a proposed budget.
Did you look up?
I'll make a motion to approve, change this policy 13.3.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions? Okay. Vote. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you. Thank you to the policy committee.
Thank you.
And Dr. Campbell, a lot of work here. Because you guys are doing every single policy. Aren't, aren't you going to do every policy?
High goals.
That's our goal.
Hundred and fifteen ago.
Good for us.
We'll add more.
Okay. Ms. Frye, superintendent update.
Um, yes. Um, as you all know, I think you've seen some of the different information we've sent out. Um, we have completed all of our input gathering sessions. We did those in November with five face-to-face and then, um, we had them with the staff as well. Um, we sent out the parent electronic survey last week, um, the eighth. I don't know what day it is anymore. Uh, that will close out this week on the 18th. Um, we have close to 400 responses, which we're thrilled about. Um, and today, uh, Ms. Goonan did some social media promotion of it as well. I also did an all-call to all families in an email home. Um, in addition, some parents have reached out to me for paper copies and things like that. So we provided that as well. Um, we're hoping to finalize two items before Christmas. Um, we're going to have a brochure that we put together that has all the data from all the stakeholder sessions. So from the electronic survey as well as the, um, parent and staff information sessions. So we'll have that completed as well as a two-page handout that will go with the posting. That's pretty typical for most superintendent postings. So it'll be kind of a narrative, but also in that there'll be a link to the brochure itself, which will also be available on our website. Um, my goal is to share that with you folks once that is complete. Um, and at our January 6th meeting, we'll review all documents. You'll have that in advance to, to read over because it's going to be a little lengthy. Um, and also we will review, um, a draft job description of the superintendent job description at January 6th meeting. So that will be on the agenda to review and I'll send forward a draft, pure draft, based on the input that we've been gathering and we can amend and change and whatever you folks would like. Um, the ultimate goal that we're working toward is to post the job the week of January 20th. Um, I spoke with Dr. Sorenson and we'll be posting on school spring, which is our typical, um, avenue. We'll also looking into posting in education week. Um, and we have two, a superintendent's association and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees as well are willing to promote. Um, and then the next kind of tasks on the, I like lists thankfully, as Dr. Maestas knows, uh, we'll begin looking for school members who will be on the initial screening. We'll be asking the stakeholders, parents, community members to be involved in the initial process and looking at dates. Um, we would probably look to interview in early March. Um, we'll probably, the application date will probably close right around February vacation. Um, and then we'll have a time where we sit and review all the applications, determine candidates, and then the interviews, I, you know, rough dates would be March, um, for the initial screening. So that is just kind of an update. I don't know if you have questions. It's a lot of information, I understand.
Two points to that for the committee. Uh, we, and you sure you can guess, we haven't advertised yet, but Ms. Frye is getting phone calls from people who are showing some interest. So, uh, it's, it's out there on the street.
It's definitely out there. Yeah.
Now, the other thing I want to say is that, um, we're going to have a sub, a screen, a subcommittee from this committee, myself and two other members. Uh, I want you to know that the interviews, we're going to have to, that subcommittee will review all the paperwork and then that subcommittee will interview the candidates. And we, our plan is to do the interviews within the same week, like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, something like that, uh, so that we get them all back-to-back. And we're looking at probably two, two and a half, three hours for each sitting. Of course, depending upon the numbers that we want to interview, but that's the thinking right now. So if you feel you, and that time is going to take place probably, we think, late afternoon.
Yep. Into the evening, probably. Yep. Late afternoon into the evening. The, we'll probably have like an introductory session and then probably an hour for the candidate. Um, and it'll be probably about a 13 to 14 member committee. Um, so we'll, that whole process, we'll, we'll look at that. So.
So think about whether or not you can volunteer that time and let me know. Ms. Badger.
Would that be in March that we would be doing that?
Yes. Yep. Probably very early March.
Early, early March. Okay.
Yep.
Anything else on this sub-supervisor search?
And I just wanted to thank all the people who have given input. They've given incredible amounts of input. The people who've taken the survey, emails we've received, um, the staff who came to the sessions, parents and community members who came to the sessions, you folks who came to the sessions. So it was, I think it was valuable. So.
I'm going to move on to agenda item unless there's some reason to continue discussion. I don't see any hands. Uh, unfinished business. Committee members with unfinished business. Okay. Is there any new business to bring up this evening? Are you getting ready, Ms. Haywood? You look like you're ready to say something.
No, I just, and, and in terms of new business, just addressing something, uh, just, um, an item that just occurred. And my question is, if I, if that needed to be revisited, um, how would I go with this? Like I just, I guess that's the question I need to ask. I mean, it's new business because it was just given to us.
You mean this evening?
Yes, this evening.
But it's not on new business, right?
But it's not on the agenda.
I can't. I don't know where this is going.
But it's not on the agenda.
So then you can bring in new business.
Yeah. So I could just.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the time to bring it in?
Yeah.
Is it the time to bring it in? Okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, you know what? Just, I, I'm, I guess, you know, kind of digesting the, the Medicaid, um, update. Um, and just confused, um, as to why, um, in terms of the nursing role, um, not helping with some of those reimbursements. Because when I think about the health envision, the ESPAR, um, because I know that, um, ESPAR is used in my institution and we as nursing actually help with those diagnoses. So it, so, I, I maybe that question should have been addressed to, um, Mrs. Raines while she was here. Um, yeah, I would just like, I guess no more.
So I think your question, is your question, why, oh, why aren't the nurses providing the, the-
Not, not why are they, um, can they be helpful in terms of the reimbursement, eh, eh, expand, you know?
They are now.
Uh-huh.
They are now. And they're very involved with it. So they're at the key. Uh, they are very instrumental in getting this done and they do log those services as we speak today.
I knew that they previously did, but-
Yeah.
Um, this, you know, this looks a little bit grim. Um, but then when I look at some of the services that they do provide, are, are we actually, um, you know, in terms of that, you know, this, this expansion of, I know that some services or some things have been taken away, but can they help in assisting to?
I think that they are one of the only entities that their role doesn't change a whole lot because of their certification. So they are in line with, the two issues that you brought up-
Yeah.
Are in line with exactly their licensure and I don't think, I think those will continue.
Okay.
Okay? And it's my interpretation of that.
Okay.
I, I would add that I thought of the same thing because the ICD-10 codes-
Yes.
It did not say, it just, it, I read the spreadsheet. It didn't say that we had to do the diagnosis. We just had to list the code.
We list the code.
And the nurses could list the codes. I can list the codes all the time.
Absolutely. So that's why I, I didn't see it as a hindrance because you have nursing personnel and we, as long as it's a continued diagnoses, we can, can, we can do that as well. So, um-
I would think the school psychologists could list the codes as well.
I think one of the things that we'll do, um, as, as this plays out is come back, give a report, how it's working, how things are working. I, I, I would say that, uh, what you're mentioning is, is exactly how we'll adjust based on what roles are and what we have. So, uh, we're going to try to maximize, but we're, we're not going to, um, diminish our role in trying to recoup some of these funds. I think it's really important that we look at how our new model will be and who has responsibility for that.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that we still have direct services and, you know, a line of students that we have to, to monitor.
Of course. Yeah. Of course.
And that's our dilemma.
Okay.
Because even collecting under the old model-
Mm-hmm.
We lobbied the town to actually recoup some of those funds to actually pay for doing some of these services, you know, some of the logging of, of information. So, you know, we'll see how it shapes out and there may be a request for additional, additional support from these dollars to actually help us to do some of this work. We'll see how it all plays out.
That's a good shot. That's a good shot. Okay. Anything else on the new business? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I have three items to report on this evening. Um, just to keep everybody in loop, in the loop, um, Friday is our last day of school. Um, it's a little bit of a change. We have this unusual calendar that we can work with. So, uh, it is a two-week break for our students, not for me or my staff, but other people. Um, Abigail brought something up earlier tonight relative to Plymouth South High School. I, I think it's important- I think it's important to identify that, I had the opportunity of being at the game, Dr. Campbell, Ms. Rice, we were, we were there, and I know everyone was gathering because of a football game. My comments are not relative to necessarily the game itself, but to the representation of Plymouth, of Plymouth North, Plymouth South, and every, kids from every school across the district, you know, middle schools, elementary schools. The band, they had an outstanding performance on that field, which was just, it just warmed your heart to see them out there with great purpose, and they're just so proud, and just, in, just unbelievable example of unified school system. Our dance team, our cheerleading team, you know, our MTV staff out there doing interviews and filming, and during the game, to see the level of sportsmanship on the field, there, we were in the last quarter, our, our, South had just, had, was, was losing the lead, they lost the lead, and we're talking of size of the team, they're just very, very well-positioned to play football. One of the players, number forty-five, and I said this to Ms. Rice after the game, I saw three of our kids, this kid went down, and three of our kids, under one of the most difficult times of that game, went to help a kid from the other team up. So when you, when you see how a school system has grown, and a school has grown, and the unified effort to just honor people, and to be in that same space, I thought it was just fantastic. So that was an observation on mine, and I think, I think a lot of people saw that as well, I mean, those are just examples of what I saw. So just so proud of Plymouth, proud of, of the athletes that were there, but it's not the athletes that were there, it's what, what they were able to, to bring together, to demonstrate what we are about in Plymouth, and that is something I'm very proud of. And the last thing I want to identify is, you know, with the weather that we've been having, tomorrow we're gonna have a little bit of, of weather, I want all our parents to realize, and I know they're all watching right now.
What about?
If, if we have bad weather, and I have had calls from parents about new drivers, this, new this, new that, and they don't want the kids on the road on bad days, and they want us to call school day when there's about one-tenth of an inch of snow on the ground. I want them to remember that children, if it's snowing, I don't care if they have a bus pass or not, they can get on a bus, okay? That is probably the safest way for them to get to school, and please, parents, I know their kids may not want to get on that bus, but it's a way to get to school, and we don't check bus passes, if they want to get on, they can get on, okay? They need to get to school safe, and they don't need, if they don't want to drive, and they're just a week into this whole driving thing, they can get on the bus, all right? So, Dr. Sorenson, that's all I have to say.
Wow, that's great.
I'm glad you said that, I didn't, I didn't realize that, but that's right.
Well, if not, Dr. Cos, I mean, Mitch Cosm will pick 'em up.
Dr. Miestis, I'm gonna put you on the spot, because I thought there was gonna be something in your report tonight that you did mention.
Probably, I didn't write it down.
We, we had this, this discussion at this table about this so-called consolidation committee, and I thought, I heard that the board, the select board was changing their position on it.
Yeah, you know, Dr. Sorenson, I'm glad you bring that up, and I did have information last week that the select board was going to bring this up again on their agenda, to discuss the, the pause, possible pause of the discussion regarding consolidation, and it hasn't happened yet. So there was some level of communication with me that that was probably gonna happen, but that has not happened, so if I have, you know, a more concrete direction, I, you know, I will relay that.
It may come up again.
Yeah, and I'm sorry that I cannot report that.
Okay, thank you. Anything, any other questions for Dr. Miestis on his report? Okay, fundraising, there was your standard fundraising review in your package, any questions on it? Ms. Badger?
There's just a formatting issue where the district-wide total isn't shown, and like on the formatting on the last page, just for next time.
Do you want somebody to look at it?
I'm just saying for next time, whenever, there's like, there's like one school without, I think it's district-wide that doesn't have a total.
I see it on my end so much.
Okay, I mean, one of the schools didn't have a total, and I was perplexed.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Anything else under fundraising? Reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt?
I just have one thing, and I don't, I'm surprised nobody mentioned this already either, is that I had the opportunity with Ms. Hayward to attend Coalition for the Homelesses' breakfast, and just to congratulate again Dr. Miestis for getting the Phyllis Hughes Award. It was really awesome to be there and see so many community members, you know, it wasn't school-heavy at all, it was business-heavy, and it was really nice, I, I knew Mrs. Hughes, and I know her daughter, and I, I'm one of the ones that's known her daughter since Girl Scouts, when she was talking about, you know, how, how she knew everybody in the community, but, you know, congratulations, and it was definitely well-deserved, and there were a lot of people in that room that really think a lot of you, so it was really an honor to be there, so congratulations again.
Present company included.
Yes.
Did you want to comment on that?
No.
Okay. We're still on to reports and proposals, Mr. Morgan?
Well, I don't see it on the agenda, but before I forget, for next meeting, I might as well cover a building committee report.
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
We're on to reports and proposals, I want to, I'm gonna thank several of us for going to that finance committee meeting, whatever night that was, the first hour of that meeting was very informative and very helpful, after that, it got a little bit too long, but thank you very much for being there. Okay, anything else under reports and proposals? Okay, building committee.
Yes, we did have a meeting last Thursday, I'll make it quick, there was a report on a maritime building, they asked some engineers to check it out, because someone observed the subcontractor using some heavy equipment to nudge the building into plumb, and it was concerned that caused damage, and we got an engineer's report, everything's okay. The North Plymouth Fire Station's moving right along, they're forty percent complete, the fire chief, everyone's happy with how that's coming. The library chiller project, they're down to the punch list, that's gonna be closed out soon. The seventeen forty-nine courthouse renovations, they've run into some more issues, they found some rotted trusses, so they're looking to create ways to try to fix it, and within the funding that's available, so some of that repairs might have to be delayed. And then the South Russell parking garage is basically down to punch list items, and they're waiting to repair the retaining wall that collapsed due to that rain we had a while back in the summer, because of weather and whatnot, it's been delayed, but they're hoping they can get like three or four days in a row, they're halfway decent, they can get those repairs, some of that, and that's the building committee report.
Any questions to Mr. Morgan on his building committee report? Okay. Personnel, Ms. Rice?
Yes, we have had four certificated appointments, three coach and advisor appointments, ten classified appointments, we have two leaves of absences to report, and six resignations, so it's been busy.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Homeschool, we have one plan I hear?
Yes, tonight we have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it has met the requirement set by this committee, and I recommend approval.
Ms. Badger?
I move we approve the home education plan as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. Any questions? Okay, we vote on that one? And everybody voted in favor, thank you. And now we have the warrant and the revolving fund warrant, Ms. Hunt?
Okay, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-121919 dated December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and one cent as presented.
And the second is, Ms. Badger? Questions? No questions, we can vote on the warrant. Everybody voted in favor, and now the revolving fund warrant, Ms. Hunt?
All right, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant, number G-121919 dated December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven dollars and ninety-three cents as presented.
Is there a second to that one? Mr. Morgan is the second on that one, is there any questions? Okay, vote on the, on the revolving funds warrant. Approved unanimously. Minutes of October twenty-first executive session, what's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Hunt?
I move that the executive session minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, be accepted and approved as presented.
Is there a second? Um, Ms. Badger's the second, is there a question? There are no questions, we will, we'll take the vote on those minutes? Okay, that passed unanimously, and now the minutes of October the twenty-first. Ms. Badger?
I just have one thing, on page seventeen, it says that, as I open it, sorry, it just says where I talk about the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, it said their first meeting, if we can just, it says Ms. Badger said she attended the first meeting, if we can just do the first meeting of the year, just other, I mean, little thing, but. I'm not sure. No worries.
Okay, we'll take a motion with that correction. Ms. Badger is the moves it, seconded by Ms. Hunt. Will I show you handles?
Sure.
If you're gonna move it, you're probably second.
No, I know.
All right, time to vote.
I don't wanna hog it up.
I know, I always look around.
I wanna give somebody else a chance.
All right, you guys. Obsolete equipment.
Yes, tonight we have North Plymouth High School Facility Department is looking to dispose of equipment that is old and disrepair, and this is cleaning equipment and a drill press, two items.
What's the pleasure of the committee? Mr. Morgan?
I move to approve the recommendations of administration on disposal of obsolete equipment.
Seconded by, Mr. Selly on a question? Okay, we'll vote on that. And now we have some obsolete, that, that vote was for both fourteen point one or fourteen point two, that's the vote we just took.
Fourteen point one, yep.
Just one.
Oh, that was just for one?
Yeah.
All right, give me your recommendation on the bed.
Fourteen point two is Plymouth North High School vocational health assisting, this is a freestyle sunrise medical bed, and this is being replaced after a, after fifteen years, and it's being replaced by a donation from Beth Israel Deaconess.
Okay. Okay, on the disposal of the bed? Mr. Selly moves it?
I'll second it.
Second on Mr. Morgan, any question on it? Okay, we'll vote in favor. Everybody voted in favor, and now the books.
Yes, we have a number of books from West Elementary, the collection in the library has been culled, and there are a number of books that are, are just out of print, and some are in, just in poor shape. The books that are out of print and somewhat usable will be donated to the Partnering with People Project, this is the, the project at Plymouth North and South High School, we have students that do community service work in the Dominican Republic, these books will be brought to the Dominican when we travel for use in this country.
Motions. Mr. Morgan?
I move to approve the disposal of the obsolete books from West Elementary as recommended by administration.
Okay, seconded by? Ms. Hunt is the second? Any questions? Okay, we can vote. And that was passed unanimously. So let me ask the committee, is there any other business to come before the school committee tonight? Don't see any other hands, we stand adjourned, thank you much, everybody.